This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City Council Zephyr Hills presentation Monday, November 10th, 2025. Ricardo, would you do the roll call, sir?
Yes, Mr. President. Lance Smith. Jody Wilkerson.
Here.
Steven Spina.
Here.
Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
All right, we will move forward with the workshop items. Billy?
Yes, sir. So what we have this evening or this afternoon, we will have three presentations. The first will be from J.E. Dunn. The second will be from Wharton Smith, and the third will be from Reeves Young. There's, if you remember, the city put out a bid for C-MAR, Construction Manager at Risk. There was a bid that was released. Several, do you know? I don't remember how many companies bid on it. Several companies bid on it. More than three bid on it. And the three, J.E. Dunn, Wharton Smith, and Reeves Young, were three that were shortlisted. They came in and did presentations in front of the committee. The committee then ranked them again, and that has been provided in your packet. And it was requested that these three firms also come in and make a presentation to council. And so the first up, we have J.E. Dunn.
Your mic's off, sir. Your mic's off.
Oh, sorry.
Are we asking the other applicant to stay out of the room, or they stay in? They, all right. Yeah.
If you, who of us, if you can first, if you could just give me your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Jake Nellis. Our office address is 5411 Sky Center Drive, Suite 200, Tampa, Florida, 33607.
Thank you.
Ready to get started?
Yes.
All right. So as I said, my name is Jake Nellis. I run the Tampa office for J.E. Dunn Construction, where I've worked my entire career, coming up on 25 years. And on behalf of our company, just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity. We're excited about this project. You may have read about us a little bit. We're the largest firm you're going to see here today. Got 26 offices throughout the country, and so, you know, what's the interest, right? Well, we work in the communities where we live and play, right? And we want to have an opportunity to have an impact. I think this park's going to have a great impact on the community. I know as a dad, I used to take my daughter to the park all the time. It was impactful. People are going to be playing pickleball, people are going to be fishing, tennis, whatever it might be, splash pad. And we take that responsibility very seriously, and I'm just looking forward to working with you guys, given the opportunity. And this is our team of experts here today. They'll introduce themselves as we evolve here, but pay attention to that top row there. So coming up on 25 years, Chris Newton, the same, John Shea, Jim Cummings. A lot of tenure. Why is that important? It means there's no learning curve with this team. I've known some of these men longer than I have my wife. We can finish each other's sentences, and so we can hit the ground running on day one. And then, you know, a large firm, 101 years old. Why is 101 years old in business important? We've been doing the right thing for a long time. We focus very hard on being extensions of our clients' business, and we've been very successful. We know we can do that with you all. We've been in Florida for 36 years. We're a local firm. We're just down the street. Done over two, almost $2.5 billion worth of CM at Risk Works. We're very familiar with the process, and certainly with all the aspects of the scope of work. During our last interview, it was brought up a little bit about some aquatics. And so this presenting team here today, that's four, have worked on similar projects, you know, whether it's a competition pool for Berry College on the top left, or the Darlington School, or a high-rise we may have just finished in downtown St. Pete, where the pool's five stories up in the air, or a simple fountain, more than qualified. And at the end of the day, it's a specialty contractor that does that splash pad for us. So we're going to talk to you quickly about three things today. You know, basically, your project, how we're going to maintain access. We're going to talk about a phasing plan that we think is unique. Talk about pre-construction done differently, so pricing, aligning the budget with Scope, Jim Cummings, our pre-con director. Nobody better in the state, in my opinion. And then finally, providing certainty of outcome. So how are we going to go about actually building the project?
Hi, I'm John Shea. So I spent a good bit of time at the park last couple of weeks, and, you know, the amount of activity is noteworthy. You know, there's, this project is more than just moving some dirt around, okay? There's some real intangible components to this project. One of the things I noticed while onsite was that we share a lot of utilities with the nursing home and with the surrounding residences. You know, the lift stations and overhead power easement on Fourth Street. The lucky superintendent who gets on this job, that's got to be foremost in his mind every day, and making sure that the activities inside our construction fence stay inside, and we don't have any effect on the surrounding community. You know, so that's called being a good neighbor, right? Being a good steward of the amenities that are inside the park, you know, protecting the grand oaks, and making sure that we collect and protect the memorial benches, and even down to the memorial brick pavers that are on site, that we're going to have to take and store, protect, and make sure that they're, that they're ready to reinstall when we turn this project over to you. So one of the things I heard in the July 17th committee meeting was an ask, and the ask was, you know, can parts of this park be maintained to the public, open to the public during construction? So I kind of took that challenge to heart and sat down with a couple of our guys, and came up with a real simple, high-level phasing plan. So two phases. First phase starts in June, which is presumably the busiest part, or busiest time of the year for, especially if you're a tennis player, or you bring your kids to the splash pad. What we'd like to do is keep that splash pad and that tennis court open as long as possible. So we'll start on the first phase on the south end of the property. There's a real natural line of demarcation at, what is the culvert there? So build an earthen berm in front of the culvert, install pumps to maintain the water level, use the pumps to divert the water around our construction area over to the outfall structure. And we understand that the city's got plans to upsize the outfall structure. So when that time comes, that'll be an integral part of our ongoings, because we want to make sure that that goes off without a hitch. So anything that we can do to make sure that happens will be priority for us. And in that Phase 1, we feel like it's a good plan, because off of Avenue B would be our access. And it lends to very little co-mingling, or no co-mingling, between construction activities and the portion of the park that we're going to keep open. So once the major component of Phase 1, which is increasing the volume of the pond, taking that fill, raising the grade around the perimeter for the civil engineers, grade of elevation 81, we bring in the hardscape and complete it, then we move over to Phase 2. Basically, we're going to flip-flop it, open that south half of the project back over to the public, and we'll take the north half, which includes still the splash pad and the community center. So making sure that the community center stays open. We want to make sure that any of those scheduled events go off without a hitch. We'll keep the splash pad and tennis courts open as long as possible. We'll time it such that when we turn this second phase over, and that splash pad is ready and ready to be turned over with the rest of it. So, you know, this is something, the phasing is something we do. We think we're very good at it. We're used to it. We build complex projects inside residential neighborhoods all the time, in functioning facilities like hospitals and high schools. And, you know, that plan will be a collaborative effort between us, y'all, the client, and the design team. What we're good at is what we do.
Thank you, John. So we feel like the success of the project.
Could you state your name?
Jim Cummings, Preconstruction Director. So the success of our project was going to begin in pre-construction, and we pride ourselves as being very collaborative and have a lot of planning sessions upfront, so that we can become an integral part of your team and help drive the project through success. And so first thing we're going to do is want to see all the as-bills of the existing facilities, go to some meetings with the engineers and city staff, and make sure we understand what's out there to work with, where the utilities are, all the things that John saw on site. We're going to start working on detailed estimates. We're going to start looking through coordination drawings. But where we feel like we really add value is that interdisciplinary review and coordination. We've got a lot of tools at our disposal to help graphically depict that and keep everybody up to speed. So here's an example of a building project that we just worked on, and, you know, our software allows us to make notes, put guidelines on there. Because not only are we looking to coordinate what's on the drawings, we're looking to coordinate what may not be on the drawings yet, if it's an early set of documents. And putting notes on there of things we might need, or things that we might want to do first, second, third in the phasing, and just put a bunch of ideas out there. As we move through the design, the comments will get less, the phasing will get less. But all of this is compiled both graphically on a drawing, as well as an eight-and-a-half-by-11 report that has the person's name that created the comment, which sheet of drawings it's on, and the comment itself. So it's like a table of contents to guide you through it if you weren't able to attend one of the coordination meetings. Some of the other things that we're able to do with our software is divide up the pricing. We can look at it by funding source. We understand that you all have a couple of different funding sources here. A lot of our public clients get grant money, they have recurring contract money, they have penny money. We're able to collect all of those into one, keep them separated, whatever works best for the project. We're able to track the sales tax savings program. Anything that you all need from a financial standpoint, we can provide that transparency and make sure that we're all on the same page. But more importantly, on the right-hand side of the screen, I wanted to show our ability to really dive in. And through those constructability reviews and getting to know the project, we look at different ways of doing things, whether it's means and methods, different product types. I'm not looking to cut scope out of the project, but just maybe enhance the project through some lifecycle cost analysis. But typically, when we're analyzing a project, we can provide options that are somewhere between 3% and 5% of the project cost for discussion. This particular project is a school project in Hernando that we just submitted a GMP on, and we actually had 8% of the project cost in options. And together with our team members, we were able to accept 4%, which resulted in just around $1 million on that project. So for your $16 million project, we look to be able to come up with ideas from about a half a million to a million for all of us to discuss and figure out what we want to incorporate, and we'll keep working. We're not going to stop at a certain dollar amount. We'll find as many things as we can to help maximize the dollars and make sure that you all are getting what you want out of the project. But we don't do all this alone. We have a great network of our trade partners in the area, local suppliers. We've got over 1,200 folks that we're routinely working with in the Tampa Bay area. 20% of our employees live in Pasco County, as Jake said, so we want to make sure we're enhancing the lives of our employees and their children. And then we have 14 different aquatics contractors that are in the state of Florida that we rely on for different projects. So during design, we'll lean on them for design of the splash pad and get with Kemley Horn and find out, is it more of a fountain? Is it more of a play area? And make sure that we have enough brain power in the room for that, to get that one designed properly. We're going to make sure that we have community meetings, that everyone knows about the project. And one of the other things that we do, we're able to self-perform some of the work, so that's a way that we can stay on budget. I know some of the other contractors do the same. We typically would perform concrete work, masonry work, and other park amenities. So if that's desired, you know, we will submit a sealed bid, just like any other trade partner, so it's transparent. Open those bids on bid day, and our experience is that we're as competitive as the market and more competitive. So we do that to help control the schedule and to help control the cost.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Newton, General Superintendent. Oops, don't lean on that thing. So when you hire J.E. Dunn, you're getting an industry-leading contractor, right? You know, and we're able to give you the comfort that we can guarantee that certainty of outcome that you're looking for, right? I'll tell you a few things that we like to focus on. The first one is safety, which is our number-one priority on all of our projects. You can see up there, everyone, everywhere, all the time, our folks on site do a lot of planning and spend a lot of time every single day making sure that all the activities are being done safely, and everybody's going home to their families every single day. You can see our EMR up there, which is way below industry average. Again, that doesn't happen by accident. It takes a lot of time and effort and planning that we put into everything that we do every single day. Some of the things that we focus on as far as being safe on the jobs, number one is housekeeping. You come on a J.E. Dunn job, it is going to be clean all the time, right? It makes it not only safe, but it's more efficient, it's more productive, and allows us to get done what we need to be doing every single day. We're thinking about things like how we're storing materials, where they're located on site, trying to make things as efficient as possible. More importantly, it's not just what's going on inside the gate, it's what's outside the gate as well, right? We talked about being in the neighborhood, in the community. When your folks are driving by and going around our construction site, it's the little things. Is the windscreen straight? Is there trash outside the job site? Is there dirt coming out of the entrances? These are the things that we focus on, because we know it's important to the community. Another thing we really focus on is quality, right? We want to make sure that at the end of the day, you have that fantastic quality product that you're looking for. So it starts way before we ever sit foot on site, right? We have an in-house quality control program that are working with our team throughout the project, from submittals and pre-install meetings all the way throughout construction, right? When we do work, we're doing first-work-in-place inspections. We're making sure that everything is being done correctly the first time. We're setting that standard, setting those expectations, and then holding our teams accountable, right? And we talk about accountability. It's not just for our trade partners, it's for ourselves, it's for our design team as well, right? We make sure that everybody is part of the team, and if the design team has things that we need, we are going to focus on pushing them to get the answers that we need, so that we can stay on schedule and meet what you're looking for. And then lastly, how we plan our work on site, right? We do lean construction principles, which essentially is developing a team atmosphere on site, right? We want to have a collaborative environment where everybody respects each other and everybody's working together. We like to implement what's called the Last Planner System, which essentially is that, just that. We want the last planners, the people that are putting the work in place, to be part of the planning process. They help us put together the milestone schedules. We all come together every week, and we plan every activity for every single day, so that everybody knows not only what they're doing, but what everybody else on the project is doing. And then we meet every single morning with all the foremen to talk about what's going on that day, what are the concerns, what is happening, so everybody's on the same page. You can see up here, we've done a lot of work in the Tampa Bay area over the last 10 years. A lot of it has been public work. We are very proud of our track record and our history, and we have lots of clients that are repeatedly asking for us to come back. So that is the best thing that we can do, is make sure that you're getting that great finished product, and at the end of the day, you all are asking us to come back and do more work for you.
Yeah, so just quickly wrapping up, like I said, 101 years in business, really focused on being a community leader, a project leader. Living, working in places where we live and play, just like in Zephyr Hills. We understand the impact this project is going to have in your community. Would be honored to be your partner to get it done. We'll open up any questions that you might have, found the squirrel out there.
Your mic, your mic, sir.
How many parks have you all done similar to ours?
Yeah, nationally, dozens. I don't know the number off the top of my head. There's bits and pieces of parks.
Any in Florida?
There's a lot of playgrounds and what have you that we do with the schools. You know, there's grass areas, what sort of turf fields, you know, pools, so yes. Don't go after parks every day.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? Thank you for coming today. A large part of this project's going to be kind of a mitigation of the flooding that occurred. I didn't see a mention of how you're going to deal with some of the flooding, or how you're going to work around how we're going to have to work around those kind of drainage issues in the park.
Well, we see that, I don't know if there's any specifics that, John, you want to talk about on this job, but, you know, we're running this all the time. We have an example at Tarpon Springs High School. This was a high school that flooded all the time, and we worked with all the, with the civil engineer to develop the site work program. I mean, you can Google Tarpon Springs High School. Anyway, suffice to say, we got it done, built this park area for them. But I don't know if there's any specifics on the job you want to talk about.
Yeah, you know, depending on how we decide to break this thing down, you know, we're going to have to get with the civil engineer. And, you know, whether we take this project and build it as a whole, or whether we phase it, we're going to have to collaboratively come up, collaboratively come up with some erosion control plans, right? Now, we don't ever want to get sideways with the wastewater management district, right? So, you know, by developing that erosion control plan, and it has to evolve as the project does. Check dams, filters, turbidity barriers. We have to make sure that we're depositing clean, non-turbid water, clean water into that watershed. That's it. Big priority for us.
Can I ask the city manager a question? Are we getting a swift mud permit? Is this part of an overall plan that we're going to have to be part of? Okay.
Yep, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, to that point, we don't even really know what's going to happen there yet, so, I mean, it's going to be hard for them to answer that question, I guess, until we kind of know what Swift Mud is planning on doing and stuff, so.
Right, so part of the process is that the engineers are currently designing. We've been working with them, but when we select the C-MAR, part of it will be they come in and they look at what the retention, you know, what the plans are. I know each of you understand what the C-MAR does, but they become the partner, and they'll look at both the construction of the playground and the splash pad and the band shell and all that, but also the pond and how that works. But yeah, that's still under construction, so I think any specific questions on how we move a culvert here or there, I think is probably too early to ask, but, you know, we'll get to that point.
I'm not asking where a culvert's going to be. I'm asking, I mean, the flood, the park was flooded from Fifth Avenue all the way across C-Avenue, and just about everything in there flooded. So we have to have an area where we have to have equipment that can withstand flooding if it floods again. We have to have it built into where you had mentioned you're going to have a up-sized outflow for the drainage, how that all is coordinated. I don't want to spend $16 million on an upgrade and then park improvements and equipment, and then have to replace half of it. So that has to all be part of how we're designing and what we're doing. So I just want to make sure that you're, I'm sure you're aware of it, but that we're talking about it.
Absolutely.
Okay, and how successful are you at, you know, using local contractors on things? I know you said you'd be bidding too, which you'd be kind of bidding against them, which is fine, because you can open the bids at the same time. So if you, you know, come in at a better bid, that's great. But how successful are we getting local contractors on board?
Go ahead, sir, I'll make it. Again, so we have lots of requirements with a lot of our public agencies, usually in the 20% to 40% range, and we meet or exceed that on every project. So, and we're not just trying to hit the percentage. I mean, we understand that the local dollars of tax base needs to stay local. So that's just a course of our businesses, trying to make sure that we have the right people on the project. If there are more people that are qualified for certain pieces of the work, then we're going to break the work packages up to provide maximum availability, so that more people can look at it. There will be potentially some of the specialty items, there'll be more of a statewide type of thing, but for as many as we can, locally, we're going to push to keep it as local as we can.
Okay, and I like what you also said about, you guys said about the cleanliness of the job. Back in my construction days, that was one of the things that we emphasized, obviously making sure our job site was clean, and for all the reasons you mentioned there too. So I appreciate that, because that's going to make a big difference as the project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So you mentioned VE, Value Engineering Savings. You mentioned a figure of 5% or whatever. How do you have, can you give me an example of how that's worked in the past for you?
Sure. I think that example, so that was a school project that we worked on, but some of it was different lighting fixtures, different. On that project, we had different exterior wall systems. We looked at tilt-up versus pre-cast for the structure.
You're looking at parks. Do you have an example of a park?
Yeah, example, park is looking at the different surfaces, whether we go with field turf, astroturf, whether we use grass, some of the playground equipment, the different material types, using the rubber mulches. There's lots of different ways to accomplish. We just need to find out what the requirements are for the different areas, and then we can bring the different products in that meet those requirements, look at them from a lifecycle cost now. Maybe some of them cost a little bit more, but they're better for you all to maintain, have a longer service life. They might last 10 years or 20 years instead of five years. So we're looking at everything, not just first-cost items.
Next question. How long have you had an office in Tampa?
So the office has been in Tampa since 2015. Been working in Florida since 1989. Been in business since, sorry, 101 years.
Okay, right, heard that part. How many parks have you done in central Florida, as J.E. Dunn?
So like I said before, I'm not sure there's any standalone park that we've done, but we've had, you know, bits and pieces of other projects that have an ancillary park. We just finished one in downtown St. Pete that has the Julianne Park, you know? So even some of the mixed-use stuff has, you know, standalone or ancillary parks. So I don't know the answer to the question, exactly how many, but more than one.
More than one, but not necessarily $16 million, you know.
I understand, I understand.
Multi-acre park. Okay, thank you so much for your help.
But in the packet, the pictures you showed in your packet are playgrounds and things you've done.
Correct.
Yeah. I really liked the one, let me try to find it. Well, I liked the slide, but you squeezed one into a little building area that I thought was pretty cool.
Yeah, it may have been Tampa Heights Elementary School.
Yeah, that might be it. I just thought that was pretty creative on how you got that in there. So, yeah, with the equipment and things.
It was actually a drainage problem that turned into a little park like that.
Nothing further for me, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Because he's not going to, he didn't have that much.
Yeah, Ted will, yes. Yes.
So the next group that we have is Wharton Smith.
Thank you.
All right.
Before we begin, we have introductions in our presentation. Would you rather us do it up front or during the presentation?
Just one second, if you could.
No problem.
Okay, go ahead. And if you could state your name and address for the record. Yeah, go ahead. If you would state your name and address for the record.
My name is Johnny Santos. My address is 10812 Laxor K Loop, San Antonio, Florida.
Thank you. All right, I believe we're...
All right, I believe we're ready.
Well, first off, thanks so much for having us here today. We are the Warrant Smith team. We're extremely honored to be here today and very excited at the possibility of being able to present to you for the construction manager and risk services for the separate park rehabilitation projects. And we're especially excited at the possibility of being awarded your construction manager choice for this project. So I'm going to jump right into our introductions and let you know who the team is going to be presenting to you today. To my right, I have the boots on the ground team, which is Mike Otero. He'd be the project manager. And then also I have Mark Elvin, who's the senior superintendent. To my left here, I have Juan Miguel Garut. He's my preconstruction executive. And my name is Johnny Santos. I'm the director of operations for our organization, and I'm also a Pasco County resident. The key thing to to see about this team here today, in addition to the rest of our team members, is that this is the same exact team that was successfully completed Hercules Park. So experience matters. What we're going to bring to the table for Warren Smith is the capability for us to be able to go ahead and produce a project that's going to be effective and basically successful for the overall process. With that said, we're going to be able to go ahead and bring the relationships that we've ever built, be able to build for Sephora Hills and with Kimberly Horn. We're also a local construction manager firm. That's a big part of what we do here. We're not here for one job or in leave. We're here to stay. We're here to be part of the community. In addition to that, you know, last year throughout Hercules Park, we actually stayed and worked through the whole process of the flooding issues that we were to go there. So we have a lot of experience, a lot of relevant and recent experience along with that, too. With thirty two Florida park projects, we're able to bring that experience to the table in addition to about another half dozen that are still in preconstruction. In addition to that, we have about four billion dollars worth of, you know, CMR projects on their belt with with forty one years of serving within the state of Florida. So now more narrowing down to more specific information. So ultimately, the most local and and most recent and relative resources that we're going to be able to bring to the table. Warren Smith has a hundred and sixty four employees that live within the Pasco County area and surrounding areas. In addition to that, our local off Tampa office has been in existence since for for twenty six years, serving the local Tampa area with nine hundred and thirty seven employees overall, that we're going to be able to pull those resources in in event of any need that may arise within this project. So the benefits to the cities of Fair Hills, a couple of key things that we were able to kind of put through and understand for the project is the very first one. We know the need for the knowledge of mitigating the park and the flooding issue. We know that's priority number one, and you're going to be able to see that a little bit more later on when and Mark's talking about the logistics and planning. In addition to that, we want to make sure that we maintain the history of the park and what's going to be needed for that. We know about the Tin Can Taurus is going to be part of the project and the historical value associated with that. We know about the fact that we have that historical bridge over there at the parks. We want to have the capability to make sure we're going to keep all that within the project itself. And then lastly, exceeding the client and and community expectations. You know, again, we're not here for one product to leave. We're here to stay, and we're going to make sure we be part of that community and make that happen.
Afternoon, everyone. Let's go over our preconstruction process with
Could you give us your name and address for the
Certainly. Juan Miguel Garut, preconstruction executive. The address is fifty one hundred Burchett Road, Tampa.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Our preconstruction process is broken down in three components. The first is the cost model. That's going to be your roadmap to success for the GMP. We make sure that you have every item identified in that cost model so you can track throughout the design process, the ups and downs through through those decisions. Second component is prioritization of stakeholder needs and wants. How we do that? We track on logs, allowances, alternates, value engineering items. Each of these are at our disposal through the design process. In the event of potential overruns on the budget, we can employ those into the overall cost model to rein in costs. And the last component of that preconstruction effort is real time estimating. When we're sitting with your design team stakeholders, we're going to be able to give you accurate, real time feedback on decisions that are being made to make sure we hit that end goal. Let's talk about our subcontract outreach. Thirty five hundred subcontractors in our database. That's local participation and coverage. We have the folks already engaged, Keeler Fence, B R W, Phillips and Jordan, Morrow Steel. These are local contractors we're not trying to develop relationships with. We have those already. We've done the outreach events. We're going to be able to make sure they come to the table and give you a local competitive price for your GMP. Our our next step in the preconstruction process, value engineering. We have many options to deploy with value engineering spanning several recent projects, notably Hercules Park. We had over eight hundred thousand in potential V E items, particularly with the splash pad. We're able to present versions of different nozzles to recognize savings, hardscape options. We did this strategy also for the city of Crest Lake Park. Six million dollars in V E were presented at that park. Two recent notable projects for Jacksonville, St. John's County, Northeast and Northwest Community Parks. We presented five and eight million dollars in V E respectively for those those projects. What do they all have in common and probably the most cost control importance out of all is going to be earthwork. When you're dealing with a park project, you've got thirty percent of your job costs are going to be tied into earthwork. What you see on the screen right now is a real, current, accurate three D scan of your current conditions. That's a LiDAR topography map digitized. It'll tell you the top of the tree elevation to the bottom of sidewalk. That's a tool we can deploy to your stakeholders and your engineers, and they can start running off to the races and making decisions on how to manage earthwork. What do I mean by that? You'll see the site is segmented with ponds. You're going to have to do upfront phasing and sequencing and make sure you don't start in the wrong area where soil is needed in another location. Millions of dollars could be wasted in those decisions if you're not made correctly and upfront. Those two St. John Community Park projects I just mentioned, one point five and three million dollars in earthwork savings were saved and captured because of these strategies. Now I'll let Max talk to you about our cost control for the project.
Good afternoon. Max Otero, I'm at ninety one oh eight Cliff Lake Land in Tampa. Juan Miguel spoke to you guys about the preconstruction cost savings as far as construction side. What we're going to do is basically kind of implement the same things we did over at Hercules Park and start immediately start logging and tracking any potential costs that could impact the project. And basically what we do is kind of log that and keep it keep it in in front of us so we know exactly what kind of money, if there's going to be money that's needed to be spent. And then the second thing we do, we when we start buying out all the contracts with the subs, we'll keep a buyout log. So once we get any kind of buyout that we can get from each one of the sub, we will go ahead and keep that monitor there as well so we can put that right back into the project. And then the last thing is take care of owner direct purchase. This is something that obviously we will set a goal at the beginning of the project as far as what kind of dollars we're trying to save. We'll take that money, put it and then put it right back into the project and add it right into our contingency. And one thing I will share with you guys real quick, at Hercules Park, at the end of the project, there was some work that had to be completed or had to be done that was extra. It's actually replacing some sidewalk with a concrete sidewalk with the croquina shell and then add some additional cameras for security. Well, because of the process that we did with the costing was we were able to take, it was about a little over a hundred and ten thousand dollars that we were able to use from that savings to buy and purchase all that at the end. And that's something that couldn't have been done without going through this little process here. Go ahead, next slide. You know, I'm going to share with you just our 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 overall construction plan. We're breaking this out in like in three phases. Phase one, going back to Juan Miguel. This is where we're going to have to really implement the flood mitigation plan and the site plan to prep. So a lot of effort is going to have to be taken care of into this part of it. So this way we can take care what he had mentioned about moving dirt around and figure out where we can save some money and cost on the project. And then, of course, there's going to be working with the design team to start doing anything we need to do to help stabilize and shore up the 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 lake itself. Again, something that would would help, especially when it comes to flood mitigation as well. Next slide. Phase two, this is basically when we start going vertical, we start putting all our all the elements up for for the splash pad and then all the other things that go with it. We'll also phase in because obviously we had to take into consideration you all being able to use part of the park and keeping it open. So if we can leave like the tennis court area, kind of block that out. So this way, while we're working, you're the public can still have access to the to the to the basket or the tennis courts. We know that's important. So obviously, we'll work around that to make sure that they can view both. And then next slide. Phase three, this is where we start implementing all the the hardscape and do the park furnishings and then try to get that put into place. And then the one thing about this, I know there there's talks and there's plans if there's a possibility of the new Alice Hall project to be put. This would be the time to do it because then now we can actually work with the schedule to extend it. And if there's obviously cost savings that we can use from this phase of the project, we can kind of bleed that on to actually doing the Alice Hall project if that's something that the that the city desires to do. So what I'm going to do now, let Mark go ahead and speak about that scheduling.
Scheduling. State your name.
Mark Elvin, eight three six Mans Harbor Drive, Apollo Beach. Yes, I'm the one that doesn't live in Tampa. Sorry. So schedule, let's talk about it. Max and the guys that we talked about how we do things in phases. Basically, what you see in front of us is what we've been talking about. So the areas in green, that's our preconstruction work, all right? We're talking about construction manager at risk. That's what we're here doing today. This is preconstruction work. We're also talking about burning on vendors. That's all our preconstruction work. Then we get to another section that doesn't necessarily jive a bit in orange. That's identifying long lead items, okay? Things like playground equipment, specially stuff for a splash pad. Those things can take six months to get. So the sooner we can identify that in a preconstruction process, the better is. It'll also increase our cost savings. The longer we wait, things get more expensive. Then we get into the fun part, construction. So first, obviously, obviously, the first part of our construction phase is going to be mitigating and taking care of all the flood issues that we had, we all experienced last year. That's going to be a priority for us. We get into our vertical phases like Max was talking about, and then really want to start thinking about adding Alice Hall if that's going to be an option for the city. And then towards the end now, in the last two segments there, right there, we're looking at testing and commissioning because when we do something very special and very unique, it might take a little longer to make sure and work out all the kinks. So earlier, guys were talking about keeping the park open or doing it in phases, public safety, right? Public safety, site safety is important for all of us. If we're keeping things open for the public because that's the right thing to do, we want to make sure it's safe. And open communication from everybody. And our team, a little story from Hercules Park, the community to the south, were very curious about what was happening. So we kept them informed. We'd like to take that a step further and maybe work with the the city on the social media face pages to keep things open and concurrent what's going on.
And then Max talks about the warrant, closeout warranty. Really, on this is something that we start doing on the beginning of the project, start collecting a lot of the documentation that's you all are needing for the closeout packages. So with with their the O and M manuals. And then also, we try to push our subcontractors, which Mark gets involved with our punch out. So we basically develop a deficiency list that we do during construction so that at the back end, when we get ready to do our walk and punch, that's actually minimized. It doesn't really add much of an impact towards the back end of the project. And then lastly, we try to work with the warranty period. So really, once you guys put in a claim for a warranty, we immediately notify our subs, get them on board so they can try to get this all done at a time of that and then complete it. And then Johnny, let me go ahead and let you finish.
So basically, why Warrant Smith? We're the local contractor is going to be able to bring that local presence to the project. We have the relationship with cities of Fair Hills. We have the relationship with Kimberly Horn. In addition to that, we have a local relationship with Pasco County. We know the flooding issue is going to be something that's very priority for this project. And with our relationship with Pasco County, we're going to be able to help coordinate that with them. I know there's going to be a lot of coordination associated with that. In addition to that, we also have the presence here understanding to work with the Department of Health. With the actual splash pad, Department of Health is an outside agency that you have to work with. In order to be able to work with them, you'd be able to know how to handle them. We've already went through the whole process of Hercules Park and know how it is, be able to handle them. And then ultimately, being that trusted partner, you heard about our local subcontractor base and our capability to be able to bring local subcontractors in. In addition to that, we also have a hundred and sixty four craftsmen. So in the event, God forbid, we have a hurricane that comes through again, and we have subcontractors that can't perform or they're not able to bring the manpower. We have a hundred and sixty four local craftsmen because not Warrant Smith is not just a construction company, we're also a wastewater company. So with those local craftsmen, we can bring pipe layers and we can bring concrete guys and everything we need to be able to make sure we can sustain the project the way it's needed. Then ultimately, the the committee involvement and personal commitments. You can see there's a that big ugly mug up there. That's me up there. There's a picture of me, and that's my direct number. So I live fifteen minutes from the project. At any point in time, you can call me up. Of course, my wife is probably the one answering, and then she'll give it to me. But at the end of the day, we're here to be able to serve you. We're here to make the project project happen for you as your local contractor. So with that, I want to thank you for having us here today, and I want to go ahead and just let you know that we're very excited at the possibility of being your construction manager choice. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Do we have any questions? I'll have a comment. Thank you for coming. I appreciate you presenting to us as well as to staff. You pretty much answered all the questions I was I was going to ask because you brought them up in your presentation. I was, I had brought part of your present that your submittal to the city. I was very glad to see that you were you're very cognizant of the drainage mitigation issues and the early identification of that. So that's very important.
Yeah, we were all there when we saw, you know, the flooding go all the way out to fifty four. I mean, we have, we went and visited the park, and we were actually discussing, you know, what the possibilities are even back at that that point in time to see what the capability is. Because I mean, Hercules Park and Zephyr Park is one of the ones we bring our families there. So
Right.
Ultimately, we want to make sure that it's successful and we're able to mitigate that flooding in any way possible.
Yes, and and just kind of a second part of that, as we have discussed with staff at that the idea of using some equipment that we would withstand flooding, so we're not replacing it, you know, so that's an important aspect of when we look to build up that we do that. And then I have a question to staff. I meant to, we're not changing out the tennis courts at all, are we?
No.
So that'll be
Tennis courts will remain.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. So the first question was, how familiar are you with the site? Clearly, you are, especially that story about, yeah, about the flooding from Milton. Talk to me a little bit about your lessons learned from Hercules Park because sometimes that's as important as the things, you know, you don't know or the things that you've learned and that you will do different this time.
Yeah, there's a couple of different things. I mean, it all stands all the way from preconstruction through construction. I know during the construction phase, one of the biggest things is the Department of Health. Because it is an actual weight, you know, it is an actual splash pad and waters associated with it, that's an outside and that's an outside organization we have to deal with. And they're a state organization. So in order to get them on your docket, you got to get with them early, start coordinating early. Because if not, you're not going to be able to get them in to do that final inspection. And without that, you're not going to be able to open up the park. So it's one of the things that, you know, our lessons learned for us, make sure we be able to get with them early. In addition to like Duke Energy is another ones, making sure we can get with them from day one and start establishing what's going to be required for those because even the C team, the C team monitor or the actual transformer itself is a long lead item.
I don't want to say necessarily the lessons learned, but I I think I'd like to deploy the same strategies at Hercules for Zephyr Park. Give you that menu of options to choose from. Hey, I really would like us to swap this item out for that one and just make it very clear and transparent to make those educated decisions and know the outcome at the end.
Sorry, what would we do differently? First of all, I'd change the weather. Secondly, I'd involve the city and actually Shane's crew because they're the end user, right? I need to build a park that's going to be beneficial for the community, for the city. But for James's team, they're the ones that maintain this park. So I need to build this park with him in mind so that's more efficient for them to maintain a park long term.
That's great.
And that goes with like the development of vendors or any vendors we might bring on board and making sure that that it's going to be a vendor that's going to be able to work with us and work with the the city as well. That way, we can finish up effectively and make sure that the park's not just here for when we're doing it, but it's going to be for long term thereafter.
Okay, I've got a couple more. So what is the monetary size of the parks excluding Hercules that you've done with within Florida?
We've done effectively thirty two parks within Florida. And like I said, it's just range, average cost anywhere from five to ten million, all the way upwards of, how much was it? The Bombay, like two hundred million? So like I said, there's an average cost that kind of goes along with it, but we've gone from all the way from the five million all the way to the two hundred million dollar mark.
So our our budget and the scale and the size of the park and the phasing of the park is not something that you haven't done before or can't handle?
Not at all. It's exactly, it's actually right on our wheelhouse and what we're looking to do. And because of the fact that we have the overall experience of it, we're able to kind of bring what Juan Miguel was talking about earlier, those all those other parks that we're working on. Because like I said, we've done thirty two, but then we have another, I guess, another half dozen at least that are in preconstruction right now. So Juan Miguel will be able to bring all that, all that information, all that understanding, all those recent and relative bills that we're getting um re- recent and relative bills that we're getting with especially subcontractors. And bringing that to the table now so we can make sure that you're gonna get the right number from day one.
Um and then lastly, um describe, you you had the slide up there that had zone A, zone B and zone C. So it looked like zone C was primarily dealing with drainage and and and, you know, site work and things like that. But zone A looked like it was more, you know, uh kind of the vertical stuff and then B was was kind of where the where the playgrounds and water feature.
Go ahead. Yeah, no, zone A, I think, which was actually, if you can bring it up, yeah, first, that's actually showing you the the flood mitigation. Cause really going back to what Juan Miguel talked about, using our drone deployed, so we can figure out where we're gonna have to move dirt. Cause it's gonna have to be moved and we've gotta figure out how we can bring everything up to get it to the level. I think they talked about elevation eighty eighty-one or eighty-two is which where it was leveled out where the flooding was at. That's what we need to do with with uh when we're in this first phase with zone A. Yeah, and then I think when you saw the other zones that came in, that basically brings you into the construction, doing all the stuff that goes vertical.
Okay.
And then we can make a decision where we wanna close off the park and and allow you guys all to be able to use it while we're doing construction.
Yeah, that sounds great. Cause even if you kept zone C open, a portion of the walkway would be open. There would be access to the lake. I mean, you know, that really
We're gonna do our best to make sure that, you know, the park stays available for the community to be used. Um but also to Mark's point, safety, that's gonna be the biggest factor. So being able to have exclusion zones, being able to go ahead and quantify it off. Cause you know, we still need to be able to make sure that the park's gonna be completed in a timely fashion, under budget and you know, and safe. So at the end of the day, we wanna make sure that we're part of that community to make that happen, but also make sure that everybody stays safe while they're doing it.
Thank you. I'm Duffy Burgess, sir.
Councilman Burgess.
Uh we kinda answered what I was where I was going to with the question. So on, um well, first of all, I wanna say I appreciate the fact that you were considering the Alice Hall in in your in your process because that that is important to us. And it's good to know that you have that in mind for potential, you know, what you could do down the road. But on the um, you know, you're talking about the dirt work and with the different zones, and that was gonna be my question, are we gonna leave portions of it open? And I understand when you're gonna be doing, moving that dirt, you're gonna wanna do that all in one process. You don't wanna kinda cut that off into pieces. So are we gonna have like a construction fence around that? How how are we gonna keep people from trying to get into where you guys are working basically?
Jump in there. But but yes, essentially what we do is that we, in order to mitigate that, it's gonna be a combination of a couple of different things. So we're gonna have flyers out there when needed. Uh we're also have the capability to have um zone lighting throughout the area as well. And make sure we're lit up well and also have robust, like, you know, separations between us and them. It whether it's fencing, whether it's, you know, whatever else that we wanna be able to put out there. But we need to have that capability to close it off, make sure it happens. With the understanding that, you know, like I said, certain areas have to stay open so that can go ahead and be utilized by by the commit- by the community. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, absolutely. And then one thing I wanna do point out is, you know, where we do say a preliminary plan. We're still at thirty percent design. So once we get our real design up to ninety percent, then we can really hone in on where we're gonna have to move dirt and fence things off. Phase things as as appropriate for construction process, but absolutely wanna keep things open for the public because this is an important part for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you did answer almost all of my questions, but I just have a comment. I I do appreciate the fact that you've done thirty-two parks in Florida.
Yes, sir.
Today.
In county.
Oh, just in the county.
No, and counting.
And county. But anyway, well, thank you, gentlemen. Uh any more questions? Billy? Alright, well, great presentation. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good rest of your day. Almost stole this from
Thank you.
We've got your number. We know where you live.
We've got your number right up there.
Oh, he's gonna fix the clock.
Oh, see, I I asked if I could do that. They wouldn't let me do that. See, but it's my big hair in the way. You just wanted
I thought the time was a little off.
Oh, be careful. You gotta be careful.
I see a lot of
No eye, no eye rolling.
My face tells everything. I do not have a It's a lot of ducks in my brain and I don't have the face, face. Yeah, that's exactly what happens.
When they're done, um we'll have time to ask staff questions about the process that you
Yeah, once we get done with with this group, um we'll leave and we'll have time to just
Yeah.
And Pete is being delivered by a swab.
Wow.
Great.
Complimentability.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Y'all ready to go, huh?
Uh, yes, sir.
Your clicker is
We're ready when you're ready.
I'm ready for everybody else.
Alright, you'll have fifteen minutes and if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Mike Iasi, two zero eight zero Bradley Trail, Coming, Georgia.
Thank you.
Alright, so uh thank you for having us here again today. Uh we understand how important this project is to the community and to present again. We wanna show you and earn your trust, just like we did the selection committee. So you're gonna see a lot of information today. If you do have any questions, our interview with selection committee was very interactive and we entertained the same type of concept here. So please ask us anything that you any questions you may have. Uh first thing I wanna do is introduce the team. Uh we only have fifteen minutes, so I'm gonna go a little quicker with everything. But Chad McCloud is our president. Marco Don Juan is our senior project manager. And Nick is our superintendent. So this team that you see here today, this is the type of projects they do. It's park projects just like this. And I can tell you that park projects, they might look easy on paper, but they're very, very complex. These guys have done several parks. They know exactly what to expect. They know where the cost savings are and they know where the challenges are, so they can address them upfront on the project. Uh so here's a snippet of some of the projects that we've done. Uh what I want you to look at is three hundred and fifty plus construction manager at risk projects. This is a different process when you choose construction manager at risk. We understand that ninety-five percent of our businesses seem at risk work. So working with Kim Lee Horn, working with you on this project is nothing new to us. Early in the design stages is where we focus on to make sure this project's successful. We'll go over that in a little bit. Alright, so two projects you see up here, uh this team did. One up there has a bridge. It has a lot of hardscapes. It has a lot of features of your park, has a playground as well. The other one is the same thing. It's a bridge through a uh basically a lake. We had a drain in the lake. Put in a lot of erosion control. We built a bridge through it. So a very complex project. Nick was a big part of that. What you see up here, we used to call project challenges because there are things that we looked at and we said, how are we gonna handle this? What are we gonna do here? They're no longer challenges to us. We've done so many of these. These are solutions to us. We're not gonna come to you and go, hey, what should we do here? What what are we thinking here? We're gonna bring solutions on day one. I wanna say this is how we've handled this in the past. We've done it these five different ways. Let's select which one is right for this project and let's move forward. Alright, so the seam at risk process, as I had stated before, is extremely important that we all work together. What you see up here is a bunch of gears and I always look at it as a machine working together. Without the gears working, the machine doesn't work. When you look up there, you see Kim Lee Horn, you see you, you see Reg Young. We understand that concept. And again, like I said before, early in the pre-construction stages, this is extremely important. It's extremely important too that we focus on the details of this project. A lot of firms will come in and tell you this is the overall picture that we have for the project, but it's the little details in these parks that really matter. And you'll see that throughout our presentation. Alright, so I'm gonna hit on these very quickly. So fast track scheduling. I know that you wanna get the park up in operation. You wanna get it done as quickly as possible. There are ways to fast track this by ordering materials earlier on the project, some with long lead times, so we can discuss that. Uh flexibility for planning for the future. I know you have an amphitheater. There's other aspects of the park too. That if you have any future plans, we wanna know about it because we're gonna put the infrastructure in place now. There's no reason to redo something in the future for something you know that is coming. Uh the community and the recreation, I mean, I can't explain how important this project is to the community. I know it is. All these parks are, this one really reached us because of the involvement of the community. It's revitalization of a park and we've done many of them. We talk about Centennial Olympic Park or Greenville's Town Square or the Broad Street up in Nashville. All those are so extremely important to the community. It's the same thing here. Uh addressing the challenges you saw before, that's extremely important as well too. We need to make sure that's done early in the process. You can't wait till the end to start addressing challenges. That turns into a big disaster for everyone. And last but not least is creating cost certainty. We gotta get the most of every dollar on this project. You need a hundred and ten percent of it. You know, and every dollar you need to know where it goes. It's gonna be a very transparent process with us. And you're gonna know where everything's going before any dollar spent on the project very early on in the process. So what I want to show you up here is, this is a roadmap that we developed for our seam at risk projects. And this is why this is important, because we never want you to wonder what the next steps are in this process. So we've developed this this comprehensive roadmap for that reason. I'm gonna click through them. I mean, this goes from pre-construction all the way through warranty period. So again, we know that you might not be familiar with this process, but that's alright. Because we have a roadmap set in place for that. Our most our most detailed estimate is gonna be the schematic estimate on this project. And that roadmap that you see is set up from that schematic estimate. So up here, what I wanna show you is this is a graph that basically shows that the earlier you bring us in on a project, the more value we have. And what that means is this, is that said before that most people focus on overall big things on a park project, but they miss the little details. We do the opposite. We focus on the little details from the start. Because they're what make this project. And they're what, that's what drives your costs. So the earlier you bring us on, the more we can talk about those details before they're even designed. And we can give input and we can move forward from there to get the most out of your project that we possibly can. Alright, so another thing we're gonna do is, what you see up here is a high-low cost estimate. So what this does is, we're gonna give you an estimate and we're gonna allocate money on what we call high-low estimate to certain categories that you feel are more important. So for instance, we heard on the splash pad that you want more of an artistic look out there. We're gonna allocate the right amount of money to that right now. Where somebody else might say, oh, it's just a splash pad. This is what we've done in the past. We don't take that mentality. We're gonna take that splash pad. We're gonna basically customize it to what you want. And we're gonna put that in our estimate from the start. And this is a collaborative effort with everyone. And what that does is it creates an accurate estimate. It's not something where we're gonna say, well, we did this in the past, it was this and now it's a lot more. Well, it's not gonna happen. And that what it allows too is, if there are certain areas that you wanna focus on that are more important to you, like Adventure Island and the playground there, we can allocate more money. If you say the landscaping is not as important in one area, we can allocate less money towards that. So that's the reason for the high-low estimate. On the other side, what you're gonna see there is a responsibility matrix, and that's important for this reason. There's a lot of tax savings when you handle certain products, when you buy them yourself. But we manage and coordinate that. What we wanna know is, what we wanna do is work those out from the very start early on in the process. So we're gonna build a responsibility matrix. It's gonna have items that you're gonna buy that maybe we're installing or items that you're gonna buy and you're installing. But all this is running through you. We're just coordinating the effort. That way you get the tax savings on any products that you buy. Uh one more thing I wanna point out too is, the options analysis is very important to us. So what we're gonna do is, like, let's say a shade structure. So there's certain different kinds of shade structures. You have a metal, a wood one. So we're gonna put that in options analysis and we're gonna evaluate that. We're gonna give you the pros and cons of each one along with the costs, so we can make a decision on the project and move forward. That works the best early in the pre-construction stages, so we can get that to you. So that way we know what the costs are upfront. What you're gonna see on the other side is our value management log. So any anytime we see cost savings on the project or opportunities for it, we're gonna track that throughout the entire process. So that way we know exactly where they are. Alright, this is uh just another snippet of what we do. We break the project into different sectors. Basically what it is, easier to handle in different sectors, easier for everybody to digest. So you look at the amphitheater versus site improvements, we can break that down. We're gonna evaluate those areas and it doesn't feel as cumbersome as the entire project. Alright, so an important thing here is, we we do our own inside analysis. We have our own civil division that can analyze projects like this one. A lot of this project, a lot of the cost is the dredging of the lake. But the most important thing with that is to come up with the right plan from the very start to handle that dredging. Since we do it in-house, we have all the tools, like what you see up there is Agtech. We have all the tools. That's your site right there. We have all the tools in-house and analyze this. And to give that to certain contractors and say, this is our plan moving forward and this is the most efficient way. These two guys on the last project they did, they used crane mats with long reach excavators. It saved the project about half a million dollars, I believe. It was at the end of the day because of our plan to do that, because we knew exactly what to do from the very start. We look forward to doing that on this project as well too. Uh this is just restroom and pavilions. There's all different kinds of types that we're gonna look at during the pre-construction stages. Uh splash pad, you see that big playground right there. We know you want something nice on Adventure Island. So we've done them before. There's certain vendors that we can reach out to and help with the designs that have that as well. We know you want some nature trails and hardscapes. Again, it's about the details in these and making sure that we focus on the right aspects as we move through pre-construction. So this right here, what you see uh is, you know, there's our construction manager fee. It's a very small piece of the pie. What we focus on is everything else in that cost work. That's all the items in blue right there. That's where your local participation, local subcontractors, that's where all that comes into play is right there. And when you look at our fee again, you can see how small the slope of that is. Alright, and here's the proof in the pudding. I mean, here's what you see up here is our previous previous projects. You see our SD pricing versus our GMP pricing. When we give you a number at our SD, which is schematic level documents, which is very early on in the project. When we go to a guaranteed maximum price, that price doesn't go up. Because we do our jobs upfront, we put in the work to make sure that the number is correct from the very start. Wish we had more time, but Marco Don Juan, thirty-six eighty more point drive, Coming, Georgia. Wish we had more time, but I know we're a little limited today. So overview of your project, you're gonna see here from what we found about a conceptual design of what this all looks like. We wanna share a little bit of our understanding and how we would implement that for your project. One of the first couple of things that you wanna look at, you know, from our experience, these are critical components that we need to have a good grasp on. We wanna make sure that you're aware of them as well. When you think about event lawns, are we gonna have events? Major events, concerts, what are we looking at here? What we've built in the past, you have different types of systems that work very well. Um on our end, what we're trying to do is identify the best product that has the best price. And then also, when you think about maintainability, something that's gonna last a long time. What we've done in the past with the vent launch, we've done a reinforced sod system. That's basically a stone layer with a little bit of drainage. Then you have the final product laying on top. We'll let that stabilize for a couple of months. And guess what? When you have events, that's a long-lasting product that serves the community very well. Another thing that you wanna look at here is, you have restrooms and pavilions. These structures, we've worked with them all. We've done prefab structures, conventional set systems. What we wanna do is share what works best. The details, you know, one thing that we do very well is, whether it's Kim Lee Horn or GMC or any other design firm in the area, we like to share what we've built in the past and what actually truly works. And if it's something that we can incorporate into this project that generates values and savings, let's go ahead and do that. Um that's something that we take a lot of pride in. Moving on to the next split, you know, next slide, we talked about the splash pad and and the features there.
Well, we'd like to hear from all of you. So if it takes over, it takes over.
Okay.
I wanna hear from everybody.
So amphitheater, we know that amphitheater is a major component. You know, we've done prefab structures, conventional structures. We've done a lot of them in the past where we just set the structure and then you come in after the fact and install all the media, all the speakers, things that, you know, something that if you wanna handle it yourself in a couple of months or a year or so, let's go ahead and have that conversation. Um fountains, we know the existing lake. We've done fountains in the past. We add the water effect to it. Um you don't have to drain the whole entire pond or the whole entire lake to make that happen. We have the expertise and we have the resources available to kinda tell you what will work best and what will generate the most savings for you. Moving to the next slide, splash pad. I know that was a key point from our last presentation and you know, whether we keep the existing utilities in place or whether we tear out and redo new. Um like Mike Mike mentioned earlier, you know, we have a lot of details. I think about splash pads that not a lot of us knows that when it comes to equipment, when it comes to maintaining that equipment, when it comes to the functionality of the space, there's a lot of moving parts to that, right? And what you wanna do is make sure from the very beginning that it's a safe environment, because the ones who enjoy it the most are the little ones, right? And making sure that you have that in place is is more crucial or most crucial. And that's something I wanna do with you. Playground, we know what playgrounds are all about. We've worked with landscape structures. I know that in Hercules Parks, that's something that you guys had in place with that vendor, but we've worked with all vendors. And one thing about a facility like yours is, once you have that excitement, when it comes to procurement, we're gonna present to you all these options. And the one that generates the best value is sometimes a really great product. And let us share that with you. Boardwalks are a little special. Um we've dealt with these, whether it's top-down construction, a prefab system or a cast-in-place. One, um you know, on our end, we built them all woods nice. It's most cost-effective, but it's also a little bit slower when it comes to construction. So if that's something that you wanna pursue, let us share with you what we've done so you can make the best decision. Moving on to the next slide, like I said earlier, we've done prefab bridges. We would try to incorporate those where we can, because yes, you do have savings and wanna entertain that. If that's not the look that you want, then let's go back to what we're gonna put in place, whether that's cast-in-place or top-down wood structure. Tear seating, once again, this
Terrace seating, once again, this is very important. Mike mentioned earlier, when you look at our estimates, if we wanna allocate buckets of month money to certain scopes, the terrace seating is something that can be a very low-cost item or very high cost, depending on what you go in with. The most important thing is if let's say we put drainage in, we install your natural sod. But if it's something that you wanna install turf later after the fact, well, guess what? We have the infrastructure in place. And that could be a lesser cost item depending on your needs. Couple of high-level points that I'll let Nick turn on.
Alright, Nick Turner. I currently reside in Snefner fifteen nineteen Long Pond Road. I'm working on the mid-south or mid-Atlantic amphitheater. So I'm local. So I'll be the, so I'll be your superintendent. So you'll see me up there if y'all sneak up there or anything like that. So apologize. Project understanding, uh, uh, like Marco was saying, I can go on and on about that. But landscaping, water features, you know, community and ran uh, enrichment, like those are big things. Those are very important. Having the water feature is super important, the green space, wayfinding, all that stuff is super important to projects like this. Uh, public art, I can, I've worked with artists from California, all over the place. Uh, getting the community involved in those Effer Hills with the water, getting that incorporated into this is something big. So working with them, you know, there's a lot of coordination with different features, footings, things of that nature, lighting, power. The list goes on and on. Coordinating that with local artists are artists that y'all choose. Uh, milestone schedule, I'll let Marco hit on that.
So going back to the uh, public art side, this is very exciting for us too. Um, what we like to do as well is host competitions. So you can see who's the, you know, make it, make it friendly, make it fun, make it exciting. Um, that's something that we've done in the past and you'll see here from all these renderings. When it comes to the construction, we build our construction schedule with pre-construction. We're working hand-in-hand with a design professional. What we do is we'll look at that, they're just, look at their design deliverable dates and then we'll add our dates on top of that. From our experience, when it comes to the design pre-construction efforts, we're looking at about eight months. Within that timeframe, you'll see the hash mark here. We wanna think about early release packages because we're building a fast-track schedule. Once we get boots on the ground, we wanna get this process going and expedite it as much as possible. Couple of things we're gonna look at is low voltage HCH, specialty equipment, the structures, and then also the site work as a whole. Whether that's your procurement or ours, we're gonna be involved. We'll go through all the scope sheets. We will help navigate that ship and make sure that the scope's covered. Um, to make sure that the bids are competitive. And most importantly, if there's anything out there when it comes to just reviewing applications for payment or whatever that looks like invoicing, we're here and we incorporate that into our schedule. Construction timeline, we're looking at thirteen months. One thing that we emphasize a lot is it's not how we build this and get this done for you. Let's think about the move-in management aspect of things. What do you need on your end to actually make this a use or make this turnover successful? Whether that's a month or two, whatever that looks like, we like to incorporate incorporate that into our schedule. But overall, when we think about this facility and what we've seen, we're allowing ourselves thirteen months.
So site logistics, uh, do I need to say my name again? Uh, site logistics, super important on a project like this. Uh, we know that there's senior living facility there. There is houses, there's all that stuff. This park is heavily used. I've been here, walked around, did my analysis of it because that's what I like to do on every project. So site logistics are very important in making sure that we, you know, the involvement with the community and keeping them safe is our ultimate goal. Being a good neighbor, I can go on about this. You know, here, right here is an initial, you know, rendering of the project here. There's a lot going on. Being a good neighbor, again, it's fence screening, keeping it safe for the community, phasing it for the community. So we can open up different areas for the community, getting the community involved, signage and things like that. It's it's very important. And it's it's a living document. We wanna work with you guys to make sure that it works with y'all's schedules, y'all's events, things of that nature. So working with city manager, public works director, the police, anything of that nature is very important. To make sure that it flows and it works with the community.
Um, communication is most important. A couple of things that we do internally, you'll have a weekly snapshot as well as a monthly report that summarizes all the construction activities. The weekly snapshot is just a high-level summary of what's going on, milestones that we're hitting, any rain events, anything critical that's forthcoming or anything that we're working through with the project, we share that with everyone. Um, if Ben modeling is desire, we also have that virtual design capacity in-house. A lot of times when you think about a park, what could you, you know, what could you model? I think about the pump room. I think about the vaults. I think about the equipment that goes in for the vaults. And then when I think about the community center, if there's things that we can do to kinda understand the unknowns and make them known, that's something that we can do as well. Sustainable design, we value that. Um, we have a lot of criteria internally, whether, you know, if that's a major aspect or scope for Kimley Horn, we wanna share what works, what doesn't. Have a large tool chest about that. And then most importantly, when it comes to just accessing project information, we work with a software called Procore. Um, the nice thing about Procore is regardless of where you're at, you always have access to it via cell phone. So you'll understand what's going on day-to-day and that's very functional and user-friendly. And then Microsoft Projects will be used for scheduling. We schedule, we have to start schedule weekly. You'll have an update of where everything's at prior to our meetings. And then also we'll make you aware of what that target date is when it comes to just making use or turning that facility over to you.
So what you see up here is a bunch of references from past projects. These references have to be earned and we really want the opportunity here to earn a reference from you as well in this project. It's like I said before, we know what this means, community, and we're here, we're here to make this successful. With that, we'd like to open up for any questions you may have.
Alright, do we have any questions?
I do. Um, thank you for coming, uh, especially if you had to fly here. I'm sure that wasn't an easy uh, journey. But um, you know, a major component of this is last year with Hurricane Milton, the park completely flooded basically. So how are you addressing the mitigation and the flood aspect of it? For the construction and the the placing even of of park equipment. So it's some of the, we don't put in things that will be damaged by flooding.
So, yeah, so I'll take this. Um, so just like uh, previous parks up there were dredging. Uh, we work with our trade partners. We have in-house pumps, but however, we'll reach out to say Sunbelt Rentals. We'll get pumping, de-watering equipment. We'll have floats on there. Obviously, we, you know, we know where we are. So hurricanes and storms, you know, reflect that a lot. So working with you guys, hey, where can we discharge this water, you know, working with, you know, getting stuff like that. So really, you know, coming up with a plan, working with you guys and making sure that the plan works. But uh, reaching out to the vendors that we worked with with the past and we were successful doing that with large pumps and things of that nature.
Okay. Now you say you have your own division. Is that in Georgia or do you have access to it here? Or how does that work?
We have access to it off in the southeast.
Alright, thank you.
No, I pretty much answered everything that I had questions about.
Alright, did you have anything to say? Go ahead.
You say join me from everybody. I usually don't get to speak. Chad McLeod, six-six-eight North Main Street, Madison, Georgia. Um, I'm I'm here obviously to endorse the team and to represent the team, but I also speak on behalf of the entire company. And it's important that that you folks hear hear this. There is not a tool, there is not a resource that we won't exhaust to make sure that this is absolutely a very successful project. We are committed to the city. This is our wheelhouse. This is what we do. And we thank you for the opportunity to come back and present again to you. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just have one question. How many parks have you done in Florida?
We've got the mid amphitheater we're doing right now. We've done a couple up along the Gulf Coast and that's it.
Okay. I just wonder how many have you done in Georgia?
Probably seventy, eighty, ninety. In South Carolina.
How many parks have you done?
A lot of vendors are people like what you think about top-down boardwalks.
Alright, well, thank you all very much. It was a great presentation. Thank you.
So I I do have one question, if if I may. Um, do you guys self-perform any of the work or is it all subbed? Yep. As part of the bid process?
Yes.
Yep.
We can do concrete, masonry, site work, so rough carpentry.
Okay.
So.
But I think the key point to hear is that if if they are going to self-perform, they bid, they submit a bid and it's opened with all the other bids for that um, that sub.
Trade.
The trade, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to ask that question.
Yeah, we typically submit our bid a day before as well. So that way you have it and then we get the rest of them in. So.
Okay.
Alright. Well, thank you very much.
Oh. Yes, sir. Sure. 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 I'll go first. Um, did y'all hear his question?
No, I did not hear.
Sure. He he asked us during our our first interview, just as a, the elephant in the room was, hey, we're not local. Right? It is. It it's real and it's a real conversation and it and it warrants a real talk, real conversation about, hey, what does that look like? What does that mean? Are there are there advantages? Are there disadvantages? And and some of it is, what kind of presence are you gonna have here? What kind of support are you gonna show? Are you really vested in the community? Are you really vested in local participation? Are you really vested in getting the local tax dollars reinvested back? All those things. Um, so he just asked the question, would you guys mind speaking to um, the question that I asked you during your interview, which was your time commitment, your time commitment, basically, if that summarizes it right, Mr. Ted? Sure. Sure, sure. My availability and Mike's availability throughout the process. Um, we have a lot of projects going on throughout the southeast. I am on the road four or five days out of every week traveling around. Um, I'm down here in Tampa a good bit. Um, I will share that this mid Mid-Florida Atlanta project is a is a great opportunity. It's a great project. So we're down here quite a bit with it. Um, there are some other NDA projects down here that we are working on, um, that will be coming out. Um, so I I am as needed. I'm I'm kind of everywhere all the time. It's it's one of those things where you won't see me just on Mondays. Um, you know, COVID changed the world a good bit. There's a lot of opportunity now through video. Um, I'm present on a lot, a lot, a lot. Um, OAC meetings, pre-construction meetings, those types of things. Um, I'm presenting tomorrow um, for the City of Franklin at for their council for for a big park project we're doing there, a big update. Um, and so I'm all over the place. So the answer will be the same. It's it's a lot. It's a lot. I will be here to support the team and to support the city and make sure every resource is available.
Um, alright. Yeah, I mean, for me, it depends on when I'm needed down here, but there'll be weeks when I spend two weeks in a row down here just working with the team. But these guys know it too. I mean, they call me at two, three in the morning. I'm probably up. Probably gonna answer them, work with them and do whatever we need to. But it just depends on what stage of the process we're into. We tell you with these guys, I mean, they're both top-notch. They're both down here all the time. And I will be with them too for a certain period of time. So.
Are are your costs, travel costs built into what you give us or would that be add-ons?
No, sir. They are not.
So they'd be add-ons?
No, sir. They're not included. My costs are not included and will not be charged to the city.
Okay, okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Alright, great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure, give me the break. We're gonna take a five-minute break. So I'll close the meeting for five minutes.
Alright, is everybody ready?
Yep.
I'm gonna reel in the meeting.
I'm gonna re-jear in the meeting. Alright, so what what we'll do now is uh, you've heard all three presentations, uh, J.E. Dunn, Wharton Smith, Reeves Young. Uh, the selection committee uh, that sat through the presentations were Gail Hamilton, Ted Beeson, Todd Vanderburg and James Lyon. And so there was a um, analysis that was done by Evan Markowitz. Markowitz, man, I always had it. See, part of, I don't mess up just your name.
Thanks.
Makes him feel better. He don't know anybody's name, that's what he's saying.
I'm fat at all of it.
It's getting better and better.
I will remember your face twenty-five years from now. Names are not my, anyhow. Um, so Evan did analysis. That is in the packet. Um, and so if if there are any questions, obviously there's a discussion that needs to be had from the council. Uh, but if there are any questions, uh, the committee, the selection committee is here as well uh, to answer any of those questions.
Right off the bat, if I may. Yeah, go ahead. Okay, so from the way it looked to me is in your analysis, the staff committee ranked Wharton Smith first and then Reeves Young and then J.E. Dunn. Um, but, right, and then afterwards, you ranked Reeves Young, Wharton Smith, first and second. So what was the difference? What what swayed you from your initial look at what they presented? From a staff perspective? And why did you recommend Reeves Young?
Once we had the presentations, we were skeptical, Atlanta-based versus someone that's based locally. We looked at the depth of the projects. We looked at the depth of the projects, the comprehensive answers that were put forward, that they knew parks backwards and forwards, could talk, uh, and great, uh, draped a deal of detail about those situations. They just seemed like they had their act together when it came to that. And the, the big thing would be the availability. It was just like, are we going to get the two that are most knowledgeable, the president of the company? And we said like, yes, you'll have me available anytime you want me. And to go further on that, I thought I heard the answer to be, the rates will be the same as these staff members that are at the table too. So that really swayed me in the evaluation process.
Yeah, he basically said that if he comes, it's on his dime. Cost of travel, cost of travel is on there. Yeah. Correct.
Excuse me, let me turn my thing. What, do you think that was true for the project manager as well? Cause he didn't come up to, to speak.
I don't know if that's the case. If you're talking about Mike, there were four of them that were here. Mike was also Atlanta-based, and I think he said that he would be a lot during pre-construction, probably is not as much during construction.
The other question I have is, um, the thing that is very important to me, and it was, it was referenced by Wharton Smith several times in their presentation, in their written presentation, was about the mitigation. They actually saw the park flooded. Does this other company realize how bad it was? Are they aware that, um, that it was from road to road and everything in between?
We didn't specifically talk about the flooding from Milton.
Because that's an important aspect of it. I mean, that's got to be completely part of, I mean, it's part of the whole drainage system.
Yeah, I, I think that's, and, and regardless of what group is selected, um, the key is that the group that you select tonight will be kind of in at the ground floor. They'll be at the 30% plans. And so those are all conversations that will be had. So the engineering firm will design what those improvements are, you know, what, what the impacts were, what the improvements need to be. Um, and it's not just what we're proposing, but also what Pasco County, right, as far as their, their, um, the Zephyr Creek Canal phased approach. And so, excuse me, I think it's, it's conversations that still need to be had with the engineers, because really they're the ones that are going to say, this is what needs to happen. And then the construction firm, whoever it may be, um, will then do their means and method and, and decide how that construction occurs, um, and how that flooding is prevented or, or mitigated or, or, you know, moved around the site, uh, so they, that they can continue to work.
And then this project, these presentations don't include pricing at all. It's just qualifications.
Correct.
Right.
So if, if I can, because I've asked that question, because I had an idea today which didn't work, so I won't, I won't tell you about it. But, um, part of the contract that we get because of the C Mar, we hire, we hire based on qualifications, and then there are typical percentages, um, that, um, based on complexity, things like that, that, um, will be for construction, like X percent will be towards construction, or excuse me, design, and then X percent towards construction. Right? Pre-construction and then during construction.
Shane, could you, could you come up?
While, while he's coming up, I just, two points that, that I wanted to, to make. One, I think we need to really think about Summerfest. I was looking at the schedules, um, and maybe that's not a big, a big deal, but just when we get into whoever we select, there has to be a conversation around Summerfest and the start and, and end time and being able to have that festivity there. And it looked like the schedules would work. The other, there was a question about, um, attendance of meetings in the OAC meetings, best owner, um, architect, contractor. Those are typically, well, this project probably will be weekly meetings, uh, at least for a little while. A lot of those do occur via video, um, or at least partial, um, participants are. For example, at the tennis center with, uh, A D, A D Morgan, Furwagman Banks, there are times where not every individual is sitting in the, in the trailer, right? They are on OAC. So that is a standard practice that, that we have seen since, um, since COVID. And I think that will occur across the board, regardless of, of what, um, um, company is selecting.
Okay. Shane, um, with the company Wharton Smith Incorporated, they did Hercules Park. Did we have any issues? And if we did, did they take care of the issue satisfactorily to you?
Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. Wharton Smith, um, we did do that project with Wharton Smith. They did everything per the design plans. So there were no issues. They built it per the plans, so to speak. And then we had warranty items that were still within our one-year warranty period that we're addressing.
And they're taking care of them, no problems?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, and the shell thing, that was, that was plan, in the plans.
Yes.
And I, when, so when I brought that to the attention, that was addressed immediately.
The coconut shell, uh, was on the plans and then we did a change order for the design.
Right.
And went with concrete.
That, so that, that's what I, I kept hearing the shell thing, you know, because, yeah, I, I was not happy with the shell. Right? But that was what the design plan said, but because they had some value engineering, they had money left over to fix and, and redo that.
That's correct. And owner direct purchasing.
Yeah. So it didn't cost us extra, even though they had to redo it.
It was in the project.
Okay.
Well, we're, go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Is it, Mr. President, may I have?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Um, while we have you up here, so in your mind, who, in terms of our staff members, will be interfacing the most with these folks? You were not on the committee, were you Shane?
I was not on the committee, but I'm pretty sure I'm going to look over at City Manager Poe, that I'll be the owner's representative.
Yeah.
With whichever contractor is chosen. Owner's rep, representative is synonymous with project manager.
And, and have you had an opportunity to review all the packages and speak to the folks in the, in the committee? And do you have a feeling either way?
I looked at the, um, presentations today because they were on the agenda. And I pulled them off the, um, city website. I'm sure all three general contractors could do the job. I don't really have a, um, preference, so to speak, although I have worked with one of the firms in the past.
Yeah. And, and, excuse me, just one other thing. One of, one of the very important things you brought it up, and that was this understanding of the site and the challenges of the site. You know, this, this group didn't, didn't really have, I felt like they didn't, this Reeves Young group didn't, even though they're ranked what, number one by the committee, I felt like they really didn't have, no one had spent a lot of time investing and looking at the site. They didn't really have a developed, uh, site plan like the other two groups did. Um, um, one thing was that I noticed that when we talk about having local relationships, when, when a group is sub, is self-performing, and this is just my experience as an architect and working in these kinds of environments, when you have a group that's self-performing, it was very kind of interesting, the way that Wharton Smith and the other group, J E Dunn, submitted, um, presented it. They said, J E Dunn said, we submit a package with everybody else and, and you know, it's our intent to help keep the project underway and be able to control the schedule, et cetera, et cetera. The other folks, Wharton Smith said, we, we got people if you need us. We got people if there's an emergency. We have 165 craftsmen that can come down here and perform, but cost, cost is better when you, when you're using your subcontractors. And so the fact that these other folks, Reeves, Reeves Young, that they don't have local subcontract, they don't have relationships with local subcontractors, just concerns me a little bit. That was my only, that was what I wanted your opinion on, so.
Okay.
Wish you didn't really give me, but that's okay.
Well, I, I would just follow up on that because, I mean, that's what I asked them. I mean, they said they have a lot of equipment and, and ability to do stuff, but if all of that's in Atlanta.
Yeah.
For those, that area, that's not helpful to us, but, um.
Or at a, at a venue over in Tampa that isn't related in the least bit to the park that we have.
But the way I understood their presentation was, uh, Marco and Nick would be on-site all the time.
A hundred percent.
And then, and Nick is already here. I, I don't know where Marco's hanging out, but. And then, um, the other two are, and you know, I mean, when we dealt with, say, A D Morgan, I mean, we weren't calling, um.
John Calliff, the vice president or whatever.
Rebecca Smith.
Rebecca or him all the time. We were dealing with the other people anyway. So I mean, I, I, I think it's reassuring to know that they would be available. Um, I just would like, I don't know, I'm pretty torn. I, I feel that J E Dunn's out of it to me. I mean, uh, that's my feeling.
They were last on.
I think it's between the other two. And, I mean, we've dealt with Wharton Smith. They're one of our five that we, rotate, I guess, and they're, and we're happy with what the, the performance of the job they did.
I, I tend to speak up, Steve. I'm sorry. At the closeout of Hercules, I don't think everything was perfect, from what I gather. I thought there were some problems. I'm trying to bring it all the way home.
Yeah, well, I, I will, yeah.
And that's what I ask about, lessons learned. They didn't, they didn't volunteer that information, which bothered me a little bit.
My, my thought was, you know, I like local. I mean, I think we need to do what's best for us.
Yeah.
I think if, if they can bring somebody in and do a job that's cheaper, then we have a responsibility to our residents, not to the local business person in that sense of construction and, in price-wise. My other thought though is, I put a lot of weight on staff's recommendation, so. And actually, the, the scoring is quite different from the first go-around, from the written proposal to the actual find. Yes, sir.
Yeah, come up to.
As a committee member, I want to say something as well. I was here from the, from the very beginning. What happened, if you looked at, all of the staff looked at the presentations that they submitted, Wharton Smith came out on one, uh, number one. When we met and they did their presentations, James Lyons told everybody that they had had problems with, uh, Wharton Smith and, and the warranty part of it. He complained about the shell. He complained about the fountain. Well, the fountain was, was done because that's what was submitted in the plans. That's what Kim Lee Horn put on those plans, was to buy a Delta fountain, and we had to live with that. The things that James complained about, and far, as far as what Wharton Smith did, this is the first time James has ever been on a selection committee, and it was him talking about it from a maintenance standpoint. I wanted to, and did say, the fact of it is, Wharton Smith is there every single day working on to resolve those issues. Yes, we had problems with, uh, Delta fountains, but that wasn't Wharton Smith's fault. It was Kim Lee Horn that, that
Justified them.
Selected it, and they got stuck with making sure that it worked for the city. They are still working to make sure that it works for the city. The things that you could see from my standpoint, as the CRA director who have said, who has sat on many of these committees, you could see everybody going, oh, 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 I didn't know that. I didn't know that. But it really was that the issues that James brought up was more of a maintenance issue that was not Kim Lee Horn's fault. They did not, I mean, Wharton Smith. Kim Lee Horn chose the shell. We accepted it. Before it was over when, we realized that didn't work. But because of the work that Wharton Smith did, we got concrete that didn't cost us anything. It came out of, oh, we paid for it, but there was no extra. There wasn't anything that we said in person around that table that made me change my mind. I still thought that Wharton Smith was number one and should have been chosen. But as a group, we decided that we would choose.
Reeves. Reeves Young.
I can never remember that.
So the issue, the issue going into the, the presentations, everyone's issue was they were not local. After the presentations, the analysis that you have, clearly that was addressed. The issues that, that we dealt with, with Wharton Smith, I think were typical. I, I think we're going to deal with those with any construction projects that we have.
That is.
Do I think that James, James was kind of frontline with it? So he's going to have a, a higher frustration level on certain things.
And we can respect that.
Yeah. I mean, as far as, as, yeah, as far as a developed, hold on a second, as far as a, a developed site plan, they all have the same thing, right? Because we're, we're at 30% plans with Kim Lee Horn and we're changing on the, kind of on the daily. You know, so really, I say all that to say, I think either, either group can do the job. You know, as far as, do they, if they can self-perform, um, you know, I think Wharton, I mean, um, Wharton Smith does not self-perform. They do a lot of, it's everything is subs. I think with, um, with Reeves Young, they can self-perform some of the work. Uh, what they said to the question was that they would submit the bid one day prior than when all the bids are due, so that there's no perception of, oh, I knew what the bids were, and then we, we undercut them. And so as a, as a staff, what's that?
I'm sorry. They still know. That's their A-team, you know? I don't know.
Well, they don't know, because they don't know what the bids are coming in. I mean, do they know what industry standards are? Yes. But I mean, as far as what the actual bid is, no. Um, but as a staff, they, the bids are open in front of us and we decide, we ultimately have the decision, okay, go with, with sub, sub two, even though they're not the lowest bidder. Or thank you, we see you can be lower as, you know, self-performing, but we want, you know, this person to do it for whatever reason we pick. Um, so ultimately, we have, we have that control at the end of the day on, on what subs are picked.
Can I ask a question?
Can I say something?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, all, I think all three of these were actually, did, uh, they all had various points that were good for them. For sure. Ironically, when I looked at your thing, I mean, I had ranked them before I even looked at that, and that's, that's the exact same order I had them in. Reeves Young, Wharton Smith, and J E Dunn. I'd like to, back to some of them, because a couple of them can self-perform. But what we got to keep in mind is, you know, one of the, the aspects of Wharton Smith that was good is our familiarity with them. And one of the, one of the things, but our, so what's leaning, kind of like Wharton Smith because of familiarity, is the same reason we're trying to, feels like we're trying to push away Reeves Young because of our unfamiliarity with them. And I don't think that should be a, a factor in either, in either case. I think the Reeves Young, they look like they have a lot more experience with parks in general than the other ones. I know J E Dunn, that has 101 years of experience in all kinds of stuff and stuff like that, and Wharton Smith, we have good familiarity with them. But, um, I, I think that, uh, as City Manager said, we're going to have the same problems with any of the three, no matter what.
Things happen.
So, um, I, I just, uh, like I said, I, I kind of felt like it, it went in that order also. And I, I don't want us to like, and, and I, I think Wharton Smith, working with them is, is great to the fact that we do work with them and know them and stuff, but I think, but at that same token, we're kind of pushing someone else away because we feel like, oh, they're, they're over there, they're not going to, and they may give us a good job, or they may not. I mean, we, we, we're kind of, but I, your recommendations and the stuff you did, I went through this stuff first. Then after seeing the presentations, I kind of changed my mind too on it, and I did the same thing you guys did. Cause I probably had Wharton Smith on top until I seen its presentations.
And again, that's what happened with the committee too, exactly that. We have, all had them fairly closely ranked. But then after we, and we, we got the opportunity, we, we spent a lot of time going through these proposals and we had about an hour at least, so we able to hear a lot more of the content and the input and then ask a lot more questions. So that helped us. Now, one of the committee members that did bring up the issues, that, that did weigh into our decision. And that person actually ranked, uh, you know, the group that did Hercules last because of it. Now, a, again, I, I appreciate all that's been said tonight, but that did come into play. But I think personally, I, it's such an important project. This, this isn't like the smaller, Hercules is a smaller project. This is a big project, and I, I really liked the, the dredging and filling information and the background and experience that they had in that. And they talked about, well, they gave the example about how that dred- And they talked about, well, they gave the example about how that dredging project where they changed the way and how they did it and saved the city a lot of money. And then we also liked how they went into so much detail. They didn't do that today, but every element of the project, they've got so much big park experience and background where they were to look at the different options that, that we could choose. And I really liked the high-low cost estimates where we as a team could look at which elements do we want to spend a little bit more money. They're the only ones that, that talked about that. The only ones that talked about public art. You know, and, and they said they're going to come to the community, find if there's local artisans and ask them to put a proposal together to blend local art into the project. So, um, yeah, just a few points I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to hear from Mr. Beeson, too. Yeah.
Hi, Evan Markwich, Lithia, Florida. Um, I just wanted to catch, touch on a couple of things. Doctor, you were talking about, uh, the proposal and how Wharton Smith had a higher evaluation score. In my view, they didn't. Um, part of the evaluation was their location. So 5% out of 100 was given to their geographic location, which we gave, which was Atlanta, Georgia. So out of a total of 20, so five times four members, they only have three. So th- three members gave a score of one and one gave zero. So really, they had a better proposal out there. And as for getting in touch and reaching out to local subcontractors, they, they use a program called Construct Connect. So it's kind of like what we use for, um, submitting a solicitation. So we use Open Gov Construct Connect. It's what big, big, um, construction companies use to get their own solicitations. So really, they're going to have subcontractors kicking down their doors in order to get in on this project. So if we want to say to them, we want local suppliers, we tell them that and make that a larger, uh, evaluation criteria. And, uh, that's why I have to say, thank you.
Thanks. Well, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what Mr. Beeson.
No, I think it was covered. I mean, it just, I think toward the end of the project with Hercules, it didn't go picture perfect. I heard about chunks of concrete that we were having to go ahead and hand carry and get things to a point. But, you know, uh, I will say that Shane's the expert. If he said that it was like any other construction project, then I will add an acquiesce to that. The committee just evaluated. We had the facts in front of us and we looked at the number of parks projects. And we thought the number of parks projects, their guns to bear, their expertise was something that was worth noting. And it was probably worth saying that they have the expertise to bring this thing forward.
Thank you. I think for me, going forward is, I don't think we're going to have, are they going to be here for us? Are Reeves and Young going to be here for us when we need them? Because like he said, he's all over the place. That was one of my thoughts. I mean, we know what we've got with, with Wharton Smith. I mean, I was totally out of, uh, J.E. Dunn, I was, they were the bottom of the list for me. But, uh, anyway, I just wanted to throw that.
Can I just say one thing? The, the, we asked, so we asked the president of the company
Yeah.
if he's going to be here on a construction site. That is not going to happen. I don't care what company it is.
I don't mean on the site. I mean available.
Right. And he said he'd be available, but
Yeah.
I mean, when we use A.D. Morgan here, we've not seen Rebecca. I mean, she does come, come to ribbon cuttings, top out parties, things like that. But as far as, as construction goes,
Right.
the president of the company, it's a sales pitch across the board. I'm not saying region, across the board. President of the company comes up, shows the face. Yes, I'll be there. I'll answer questions. They're not getting their hands dirty. No, it's, it's not happening.
I have a question specifically for Mr. Beeson. Mr. Beeson, did you see the documentation that Wharton Smith submitted as it related to tax savings and all, you know, because they have a big responsibility to our accounting department? How well of a job did they do at that?
Wharton Smith did a very good job with tax savings, as I believe any of them would do. They're going to turn it over to us and say, directly purchase these materials, you'll save the sales tax on it.
Okay. Councilman Smith.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, sorry I was late. I, no, anyway. The thing that, when I was looking through the agenda, that struck me is, is the staff who we put, I put a lot of faith in their, their recommendation. And when they reevaluated, it wasn't close. I mean, you're talking 92 to 83. So it was like, if it was close, then I'm like, ah, you know? But hearing the reasons is because they've done so many more of the larger projects, I'm assuming, and they, they went into detail on some things. So I, I hate that I didn't get to hear it. But again, I put, I put it a lot of faith in staff and, and they were close at first. And then every one of them flipped and had what the Ree-, uh, Reeve Young hire. So I'm like, I, and I think either one's going to do a good job.
Okay.
But maybe they add, maybe the larger company that's done, or the larger project company was like, oh, we did that before. That's not going to work, you know? They, they have some knowledge that, that could be helpful. But either one, I think, is going to go, but I just kind of defer to staff, basically. Because it was such, such a disparity. I mean, it wasn't close.
Um, I have a question for, uh, the city manager. Um, so we're 30% design. And, uh, Kim Lee Horn is doing the design. When would the, uh, the thing that I was impressed with from Reeve Young was some of the pictures they had of projects they've done and different, uh, different approaches to the amphitheater and things like that. How involved would they be in the design of the equipment and those kinds of features as the contractor?
Yeah, I, I'll let Shane answer that because he's really dealt with it. But I, I mean, I think we're, they're as involved as we want them to be.
Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. Typically, on a C-MAR project like that, the C-MAR, the construction manager will work with a design team. And the design team will actually design, I'll use a, um, picnic pavilion, for example. They'll specify out a picnic pavilion, um, type of roof, type of, uh, materials. And then if the contractor or construction manager sees some areas where they could maybe save money, then they put their input into the value engineering. But they don't get involved a lot with the design. It's all the design team.
And who's the design team?
That would be Kim Lee Horn.
So, so they will, so part of it is, and I think I, I don't remember which group it was. I think it was Reeve Young that said it, um, that talked about the, the design of like bathrooms. Is it, is it a CU, CMU? Is it, is it site, well, sorry, is it site-built or is it, they bring it in, you know, a portable that they bring in? Is it cast, cast-in-place or prefab? Thank you. Um, you know, and, and what costs more? Is it, is it tilt wall or is it just a, you know, a CMU? And, and honestly, I think every one of these companies will do that. I mean, it's just kind of standard practice of the trade that, that they'll sit in and they'll say, if you do this, it's going to cost this amount, amount. If you stay with the design, it's this amount. And I, for example, when I was in Dade City, the, the C-MAR came in, uh, Ajax was the group. You know, there was, the architect had a, or engineer had a, like a, it was like a 48-inch beam that ran through the middle of the council chambers or commission chambers. And the, the construction company is like, well, if you change it, you can do this and it actually be hidden. It can be a smaller beam. So I think it's really, that's a standard practice across the board of all companies will, will do that. And we want them, and this is the time for them to be hired on, regardless of who we select. Now's the time because we can start making those changes. And it's not, the design's completely done and then we're ready to go to bid. They're like, oh, well, if you would have, you know, went CMU instead of tilt wall, you would have saved this amount of money. It's because then they have to redesign it, right? So they get in at the beginning and say, I think you could do it cheaper this way. And then the design is done that way. Um, so it saves on design cost as well. So we had that issue with the tennis center going back and forth several times. And that has nothing to do with the C-MAR and the engineer and the architect. It had everything to do with the funding. And we were getting this amount of money, then it got changed. And, and so there was a lot of design cost. And so it helps, by having the C-MAR in, I'm giving you a long answer, but having the C-MAR in at this step saves a lot of those design costs as well.
And that's typical. Uh, I'll use the City Hall project, for example, that we had the contractor in about 30% plans. And by the time you get to 90% plans, that's when the C-MAR is going to issue the GMP. So they've had from 30 to 60 to 90% plans to, um, value engineer and make suggestions that might save the city money.
Right, without compromising design. That's the beauty of the C-MAR concept, is that the architect, you know, isn't designing in a vacuum. They know some of these decisions about what the impact on cost is going to be or schedule, et cetera. One of the things I thought was going to be interesting is Reeve Young indicated that they have a civil team in, in-house. So one of the things we want to be careful about is that we're not overlapping services, that we're not paying for something that we've already paid for. So, um, you know, it just seems like bigger firms and firms with this kind of, this level of, of, of experience, good or bad, they're going to drive a lot of the, the whole design. I, I think, I think we're going to see that. But, you know, if, and I too, respect the, the people on the committee. And, and, you know, that's why I came right out and asked you if, if you had any qualms, if we went with somebody other than, well, Wharton Smith, because to me, they're the obvious answer, simply because it's the devil you know. Like you said, there's going to be a problem in no matter what project we do. At least we know how Wharton Smith is going to perform. We, we don't know this on this other firm, but chances are they're going to do just fine. So.
And sir, can I ask?
Yes.
Can I say a couple of things?
Please.
I keep hearing, um, that this Reeve Young ha- has done so many more pro- projects. When I took my notes, they said they've got, they've done 50, about 50 park projects. And Wharton Smith said they've done 32 park projects locally.
Here in Florida.
Yeah.
So I don't know that that should play as big as what we've talked about, that this one prod, they've done so many more projects. And then when I looked at what they're, they're doing, some of the stuff that they sent, that is way above our budget, right? Way above what those, some of those projects that they had shown on their things. That's just my thought. But I don't know. I mean, we're going to be fine either way, any way we go. But that's one of the things that I kept hearing that I'm like, I don't know that that.
Yeah, I think the park numbers are
Yeah.
comparable.
Yeah.
And the experience is comparable.
I agree.
I do like some of the, um, ideas that Reeve Young showed. I mean, some of those aspects of it, I, I did like that. Now, maybe they are out of our price range.
Right. And that's what we don't know.
And then the other good thing was, I think it was Wharton Smith that said that through the value engineering and things like that, the savings can help with Alice Hall Community Center. We, you know, we need that aspect of it, too. So I don't know. Um.
And I don't think that's a maybe. We have to do Alice Hall.
No, I don't think it's a maybe either.
So that's got to get put into this scope.
Okay, and then.
Jessica Carter, Assistant Finance Director. I just wanted to add that in the solicitation, we did put Alice Hall as an ad alternate. So all the firms were aware that Alice Hall will eventually be part of the project. So just because one mentioned it and the others didn't, doesn't mean that it wasn't aware that that is coming down the pipeline as well. Just wanted to make sure everybody.
Thank you.
I had a question for Billy. Um, and Steve brought up about, we're just deciding based on qualifications, we don't, haven't got a price. So let's say we decide on one firm or the other. And then you said there was some sort of a formula or something you would go by to figure out what, what it should, what the price should be or what they should charge?
I think it's part of the AIA contracts, correct? I really don't get involved too much on those.
Okay, well, what, what I'm saying is, um, so let's say that we choose one and they come back and it's like, whoa, we were not expecting that. Was there a mechanism there where we say, well, maybe we're not going to go with you now? We're going to go with the next in line at a better price or what? How, how's that work?
Yeah, I, I think there's a few options. We, we say we're not going to continue forward, but there's also a breaking point or a, a
Right, and a delineation line.
Like it's, it's defined pre-construction design. And we can get to the end of that and say, okay, we're not moving forward. Uh, we're going to go out, back out to bid again, or, or go back out for solicitation. And so there are, there is a breakpoint at the end of design where we don't have to move forward. But yeah, so the first part would be for design. And then, I mean, you have the whole contract, right? But the first part of it is for design. And there's a breakpoint there where you can sever ties if, if you so choose.
That's a good point. So we can say, we'll negotiate with the first one. If that doesn't work out, then we go to the second one.
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct, if it, yeah.
Is I right?
If I can just add on to that, Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. Typically, we'll have an AIA document, um, contract that will be approved by the council. And all of those monetary, uh, percentages will be in there. The pre-construction amount that City Manager Post talking about, that we were pretty much guaranteed to pay them the pre-construction. But if we stop at that point, we don't have to go further with the, um, contract. And then in the contract, you'll have overhead and profit percentages built into the contract. So that'll be all approved by the council prior to, uh, issuing a purchase order and notice to commence with the contractor.
I could add one other thing that's not.
Yes.
Billy, you mentioned about the Summer Fest thing. I'm, I'm going to strongly suggest that we don't try to work around, because if they're ready to go, this would be a, be a big project and take a long time. I don't think we hold anything up because something may go on there on the Fourth of July. We've got a great outdoor venue right out by the airport that we could use as a one-year substitution or something. I don't want us to hold anything up on this project based on some kind of a, you know, something that has been there for a few years, but maybe it's, it can come back to a bigger and better place.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it looks like is it time to make a decision?
Well, this isn't a regular meeting, is it?
Yeah.
It's a workshop. We can't vote.
Oh, I thought you were going to.
But you want to.
We could get a consensus. And then what we would do is, is is award the bid. We could award the bid on the 17th, which is next Monday. We have a couple of items that we can either hold a, a proper meeting or we can push off. It's not, nothing's life or death with our, our next meeting. But if we want to stay on schedule, we could get the consensus tonight. We would award bid on the 17th and then award contract on December, not 10th, I think, is the next meeting.
December.
December 9th. Yeah. That, that was the plan of what we were going to try to do.
We have a meeting this coming Monday?
We have a meeting this coming Monday. It's the workshop.
Oh, yes.
So we have the workshop that we were going to do, uh, um, a proper council meeting if needed. And so if it's award the bid, it's, I mean, we will have some simple, we have some purchases that could go on if, but if we choose not to, we push them to the 9th. And the same with this, what we'd like to do is award the bid on, on the 17th if possible, and then award contract in December. And then they would come on board, start of the year.
I think you gave us.
Yep. We'll fill it out and pass it down.
Let's make sure that how everybody's feeling about the same.
Yeah.
Are we, are we ranking?
I'm just doing one through three.
It is a one, two, three.
The lowest, one, two, three.
And the lowest.
Okay, got it. Okay.
I'll say it, one to three.
Yeah.
It's tough, really.
All right, just to be clear, the committee vote wasn't really unanimous. I mean, there, there was three to one. Sort of.
Oh, no, no, no. It was a compromise. I, I gave in.
Okay, all right. Okay, it was, all right. And then.
Yeah.
And then, so the, the staff recommendation is Reeve Young?
Correct. Yes, sir. Based on the committee's, uh, vote. Light here. Got some IT issues. Uh-oh, light here, got some IT issues. Somebody gave me origami here.
Chesapeake better come add these up.
Yeah. It's it's, you guys have a tie between Reeves Young and Wharton Smith. Six of you voted.
But does the mayor have a veto vote? I don't know.
I don't think so, not on this. Yeah, so I I don't. I have no idea how this works. Um.
Paul Dart, he might know.
Um.
This is just like the the committee.
We might have to vote again.
Well.
Let me call Matt real quick. Matt, are you in the building?
I mean, that's probably the the true solution, I guess.
I mean, I'm sorry.
No, I pulled my, I don't, I'm just telling you that when we did the other one, that's what they asked me to do. And that's what I did, so I will pull my nose.
That was when we did the one for out there at the, okay, we got, oh, this building. City art, and we had.
Well, then wait, just wait.
See what Matt said.
What?
We got to stay till we get, get it.
Yeah.
So Matt will come down here, uh, what he relate.
Sorry, Matt will come down here. What he relayed to me was, um, mayor can give an opinion but does not have an official vote.
I pulled it out.
Okay. All right.
All right, so we'll go. All right, with that, um.
I don't want to complicate this, but really, I don't know that we should even be voting. We should officially, we should be just giving a consensus. Because it is a work.
Okay.
You want to tell us?
What's the consensus? The consensus is three to two Reeves Young.
Okay. And that was the, and that was the, uh, committee's recommendation. So I think we should tell them they're the first choice. Simplify it.
Okay.
There is, does it, does it require a vote to inform the general contractor that they, or the C Mar that they've been shortlisted or whatever?
No, what will, what would happen is we would, um, we'll, we'll have the co, sorry, we'll have the conversation with the, um, with Reeves Young. We would come back to council on the seventeenth with a a recommendation to award bid to Reeves Young. At that point, council takes a vote and either agrees with the recommendation or does not. And then, um, if you agree with it, then we move forward with the contract to bring it back at the next meeting. If you choose to not, um, takes, take the recommendation, we'll have to have a conversation at that point on on what direction, uh, council would like to go.
Well, I even think that if it was tied, you would use the staff's recommendation as a tiebreaker anyway. I mean, really, that would be the logical thing. Okay, so is this conclude?
I think this concludes this meeting, yes.
Oh, nice, well, I'm going to go ahead and close the meeting. Good evening, uh, we'll call to order the, uh, November tenth, twenty twenty-five Community Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Um, pardon me, we have a long call.
Yes, sir. Lance Smith.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Steven Spina.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
Here.
I'm sorry, your mic's off.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton, we have, uh, well, first, um, first business item, one point one, approval of the CRA meeting minutes from October twenty-seventh. Do I have a motion? Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Uh, Ms. Hamilton?
All right, because of our time, excuse me, of our time constraint, we're going to pull the master plan and we'll go over it at the next CRA meeting because I need an hour. And I'm doing it, I will do the presentation, not Claudia hour.
Okay.
Um, I thought that would make everybody happy. So if we could.
Pete should be happy.
Um, Commissioner, could we please move to, uh, one point three?
Yes, ma'am.
So at our last meeting, we talked about increasing the grants from just increasing each and every one of them, the homeowner incentive from five to ten, the matching commercial facade. And this is the exterior of a commercial building only. Um, the commercial improvement grant to fifty thousand from twenty, and that includes interior and parking lot improvements. We did not specifically talk about the matching residential facade grant. It is twenty-five hundred dollars now, I bumped it to five. My question is to the group, do you want to do ten?
Which one was that, Gail, I'm sorry?
The residential.
Yeah, I think we talked about the value of ten thousand as being something that that is significant enough that, you know.
I think it would interest.
Or replace a s- a porch that's failing or whatever.
So I did not, we didn't talk about it specifically, I couldn't find it in my notes. But I did, I put five, but we have an opportunity to change it to ten right now if you would like to.
And you have funding for it.
We do have funding. And the idea is, remember, these are all matching grants. We have a pot of money. When the pot is gone, our grants stop for the year unless you want to add to it. Um, there's two hundred thousand in the grant, um, funding right now, so, um.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Is the pot split, is there a split in between commercial and res, so it's just a, okay, that's.
I do have the the hundred thousand dollar, and it's not on this list, as the, um, our restaurant grant. It's beside, it's it's separate.
Yeah, we did that last year, City Manager.
Does the residential facade grant, um, cover roofs?
No, it does not, we do not do roofs. So I, if somebody said that.
Well, I know, it it just, it frees up money to do a roof if if people's.
Okay.
And and that's how we've done it in the past, is you do your roof and use it as your matching funds. Yeah. Because all of our work is matching.
Can they do that?
Yes, they can do that.
So there's a list of items that are eligible for matching?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that because we had that conversation a couple of days ago.
Yes, we did, yes, we did, I appreciate that, thank you. So if I, I'm sorry, I'm doing your job. So if we could get someone to say, you know, to increase it.
Uh, is there any?
Yeah, there's one other question. And on the commercial, didn't we put together a a three-person committee on that?
We did.
So, and, uh, and.
So it's not Gail's decision, it's the committee's decision.
Seeing that, that's what I think is like, it's better for you to have some.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I get in trouble with code enforcement because it's, you know, Gail says you can't have that sign.
Um, at least you stated it correctly.
Wow.
It's because she knows the CRA. Because Nixon's going to be saying, Jody doesn't like that because it doesn't mean the code.
Okay, so if there, is there a consensus or do I have a motion to approve these, uh, grant changes?
Move approval.
And I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I just want to clarify that it will be ten.
I'll amend my, uh, motion to include a, the residential grant will be moved from five thousand to ten thousand.
Perfect. And I will second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. If we could get twenty people, it, that won't, that we won't spend that money. It's unfortunate that we won't.
Absolutely, and I just like, I mean, the last couple of years, we've not spent very little of it. The biggest thing we've used is the, um, five thousand dollar homeownership. So this will help tremendously.
Can they use that towards that as well?
Um, yes, they can, once the property is, um, they have, uh, purchased the property and the closing has happened, they can do whatever they want to with that ten thousand dollars, so.
So so they could take that and use that to do their matching portion and then get a facade grant?
Yes, they can. It is a way to help us make people pay attention to what Zipper Hills is doing.
And then can we, we'll make sure that we get out to the realtors and the lenders and let them know that this is the new rates and and amounts and what they can do.
And Monica and Sherry, um, are, Sherry Freeze and and Monica from.
Young.
Young are going to help me with that as well and and I can certainly ask.
Okay.
Um, so we will start a marketing campaign, although CRAs don't do marketing, we do education. We're going to educate people on our grants. Um, I just need to do a couple of updates. Um, all of the parks except, um, the football, what is that, where the?
Cruisin'.
Cruisin', Cruisin' and Ellis Herald are the only two parks in the seven parks that we're doing that don't get shelters. The shelter permits have been submitted, we are, uh, Calvin is reviewing them today. They will start doing shelters in the parks. Um, so you'll start seeing work going on and then the actual equipment will be started in, uh, December.
Okay.
So you'll.
We had talked about a a shelter at Cruisin', didn't we, Mr. City Manager?
It's not in the playground equipment.
Yeah, it's not in the playground equipment, um.
But you said it was in the funding for this year.
It can be the funding, we need to find the location, but it's not part of of this project.
Okay, all right.
Um.
Thank you.
And there's no room at Ellis Herald, they already have a shelter and there just is not enough room.
I understand that.
By the time we put the sign in and the landscaping, there's no additional, um, signage. So, um, Oakside Cemetery, we will have our kickoff with Wharton Smith on the nineteenth. Um, and construction start should be the end of January. So you'll start seeing the, um, construction, the new fencing, the new irrigation plantings, all of that going in at Oakside, uh, in January. And then we will do Eighth Street. We want to try and make sure that Sixth is done and cleaned up and we're past the holidays and we're not messing with that. So we'll, I'll give you an update on that later. Um, we have met with the signage company and are moving forward with the signage for the four parks. In our meeting, we discovered that we could do it at a better cost. The sign company had a, uh, value engineering, uh, idea suggestion. We'll be able to save enough money that we think we can light up each one of the signs and not spend any additional money. So that was a great thing. Um, and I think that that is it, unless anybody has any questions?
Any questions? No, um, I see that Antoine's not here, but I would like to say that you did, all did a good job on the Veterans Parade. I thought it was a good parade, there was a lot of people there.
More than we've had in the past, it's still not, um, Christmas festival of lights.
No, but.
But we, each year, we're getting more and more and we're starting this, we'll start this year, planning next year because next year it'll be the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, uh, celebration year. And so we will, um, want to encourage more people to participate. This is the largest of entrants that we've had since I've been here, so.
And yeah, and you had bands, you had, uh, ROT, Junior ROTC, the 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 military vehicles were good.
Yeah, it's a great partnership, the Military Museum partners with Main Street to get this done,
the schools partner, uh, with them. And the best thing about it is, everybody was having a good time.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it didn't last all day, it wasn't a whole, you know, a whole day you had to give up, but everybody was in a good mood and enjoyed being downtown.
Right, okay.
That's all I have.
All right, anything else for the CRA meeting? Uh, and anybody in the audience have any comments? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Pass the gavel. We want to start her up. So we'll see, on time.
That's good, you can.
Yeah.
I wish I could.
Hey, Gail. What's that?
I forgot my glasses, I can't see the screen.
That's never good. Yeah. What is this? I mean, you can feel it. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty five, six P M regular city council meeting. Could we have the roll call, Ricano?
Yes, Mr. President. Lance Smith here. Jody Wilkerson.
Here.
Steven Spina.
Here.
Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
Here.
Thank you, sir. If we could stand for the pledge, Ms. Pastor Fran Stubbs from Oasis Church will be giving the prayer.
Ah, there we have it. Thank you. Good evening. Can we bow our heads for prayer? Lord, we just thank you for this meeting tonight. Thank you for every plan that is on the table, for all of the projects that are upcoming. We pray for the prosperity of our city. We pray God for wisdom. We pray Lord for finances, for everything that needs to get done. In the name of Jesus, we ask you, Lord, that you would speak to the city council tonight, Lord, and allow them to make the decisions that are necessary for our city. And we give you glory and honor for all things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. All right. We will move on to citizens' comments. Who do we have signed up, sir?
I have two signed up. First, I'd like to call Pastor Fran Stubbs.
All right. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Pastor Fran Stubbs, Oasis Church, six four four zero twelve street, Zephyr Hills, Florida. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all again on tonight. Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen of the council and everyone attending on tonight, thank you for giving me a few moments to be able to speak with you tonight. I'm here both to express my gratitude and to kindly bring up again my last time that I was here and we discussed some support for our outreach efforts. Your help is vital in making a real difference in the lives of many here in Zephyr Hills. As we approach Thanksgiving, we are preparing to provide Thanksgiving baskets for thirty families and also to serve dinner in conjunction with Metropolitan Ministries on Thanksgiving for our community. In addition to these seasonal efforts, I want to highlight what we have been doing all year long. For the past year, we have been faithfully serving our community three days a week, every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, providing both lunch and dinner. Through our food pantry and meal services, we've supported countless individuals who are who are struggling, especially as they face challenges like the reductions in SNAP benefits, joblessness, and homelessness. We deeply believe in the strength of community partnerships. With your financial support, we can continue these essential services and expand our outreach to even more families in need. Your contributions will help us to bring hope and support where it is most needed. Thank you for your consideration in this request and for standing with us and with the families here in Zephyr Hills in our community. We truly appreciate your time and your partnership. I've also brought with me copies of our flyers that we have been distributing to the community online and all of our community groups for our Thanksgiving baskets. We actually have met our max for the Thanksgiving baskets. We've already, we've been going through the lists. And actually, that's what I was doing before I got here, was actually taking in the names of families that are in need. And we actually have more people to reach than what we, you know, what our supplies actually have. So we weren't able to reach more than the thirty families. And so we're not just giving them, you know, uh, you know, some frozen food or whatever. We're actually giving them turkeys and hams and all of the fixins for Thanksgiving so that they will be able to celebrate their holiday with their families, regardless of whatever's going on in their families at this time financially. And then also, we have taken up, as many of you know, the partnerships that were previously there at the cafe with Healing Hearts Cafe. And so we are still continuing those partnerships with Metropolitan Ministries. And so we are partnering with them for dinner on Thanksgiving Day and have several volunteers who are going to be coming in and serving with us as they provide Thanksgiving dinner so that whoever in our community is able to come in. And I just want to add that what we have seen this past year is that we're not just serving the homeless community, but we're actually serving families, babies, you know, parents who are carrying in their children with them, you know, to be able to help them and to serve them during this needed time.
Well, thank you very much. Billy, is there anything we can do?
Uh, what we've, we've, anybody that comes in, we push them towards CHIPS and the partnership with CHIPS. Uh, that's how we're handling requests at this time.
Okay.
Okay, and I might just want to add, we are actually, CHIPS brings their clientele to us. So whereas CHIPS is helping when it comes to helping people get placement and different things of that nature, as it relates to food needs and the food insecurity that is there, we are helping CHIPS. CHIPS brings their clients to us when they don't have food and different things of that nature. And so we have, we have very few people who are actually supporting the work that we do. What we have with our own partnerships with Metropolitan Ministries, we have St. Joe's is helping us. And then we have a donor who comes in and brings cash in twice a week to come and support. But whatever does not come from there, our church is supporting wholeheartedly the entire endeavor because we do not want to see our community go without. So if there is a way that you can look and see if there's something else that can be done, we would greatly appreciate that. Because we we have the proof on record for the families that we have served and how we have helped CHIPS because CHIPS brings people to us.
And and let me add, Chief, they don't feed. CHIPS is not a feeding program. So just so we know, understand that. Thanks.
Yeah, sure.
Derek Brewer, Police Chief. I can tell you, I don't have a lot of opportunity to talk to Pastor Fran, but she's been a great partner with us. And she's right. We don't get into the food part. And when we are, and I do know that a lot of hers is focused on the families. So she has been a great partner. And again, she is providing some services that we just we're not doing. So.
Would would it, may I, would it help if Pastor Fran and her organization worked with the Homeless Coalition? And and in addition to Metropolitan Ministry, would that help serve some of the same people? Or is that really what you do with CHIPS?
Um. It's kind of all a little bit of an overlap. So they already have that established relationship with Met Men as we do. We deal almost primarily with the Coalition because we're trying to get people within the homeless management system so that we know what has been offered and what else can be offered. I don't know if they're, are you guys part of the HMIS system yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, okay. But it's a, that, when we're doing it, when we're doing referrals, we're, and we're making contact with them, we're entering them into HMIS. And then we're obviously sending them to people that, like Pastor Fran, to get them fed or other clothing or whatever it is, just like we would with any of the churches locally.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, excuse me, sir. Um, Chief, is there, is there a kind of a clearinghouse of some sort? Because I know that the First Presbyterian Church, the exciting Chanty Road Christian Church, there's a number of churches, St. Joseph's, you know, the First Baptist, there are different groups that are feeding the homeless, but a lot of times it's on different days.
Yeah.
And so, so is that information available to the people who come to CHIPS so that, you know, if on Mondays one church does it, another, another day, you know, there's a food bank at another church on a Tuesday? And so that during the week, the family gets something to eat.
Yeah, so Kathy keeps a list of those. So people, when people do come, she knows where to send them. And I, I would probably even go as far as saying that Kathy has probably reached out. It's kind of get a feel for what the, what Pastor Fran is looking for as far as like, you know, the referrals. But she does, she keeps a list of all of it. And it does change. So it's, it's hard to actually do a list list because churches change their feeding times. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Billy, is there anything that we could possibly do to help out Oasis?
Um, if you're talking financially, that's, that's up to, that's council's call.
What, what is it that you, you have a benchmark that you're looking for as far as feeding?
So for us, like right now, our issue is that now we have the, the, what we started with as far as feeding community, like when we first started, maybe five people would come in or something like that. But now we are filling up during the day because people are hungry. So we pay for a food truck for one of our donors that comes out of our funds. So that's like three hundred dollars a month that we pay for the food truck without the help of the other donors. You know what I'm saying? When we start talking about all of our overhead, we have the freezer there. So, you know, most of the churches don't have the storage space that we have because we have walk-in, we have the walk-in freezer. That causes our electric bill alone to be five hundred dollars a month. So without the help of donors, most of those things, our church is helping to, you know, keep that going in addition to feeding. And we're not sending them out with sandwiches. We are feeding them hot meals three days a week for lunch and for dinner. And so we're doing our level best so that when they come in, they're in a family atmosphere, they're able to sit down and eat a good party meal. So anything that is over and above whatever we are doing ourselves is is a help.
Can I ask a question? Um, how are you funded? Just volunteer donors or how, where's your?
Yes, sir. Volunteer donors and then whatever the donors don't give us, my church takes care of that. And we, we just, it's a labor of love for our community. So if the money doesn't come from somewhere else, then the members of Oasis Church ensure that the bills get paid, that the truck rental gets paid for us to go pick up the food and whatever else it is that we're doing. And it's been a struggle.
And where's, where's your church?
We are located right on.
High School. Oh, your church is in the same building? Oh, okay.
So we actually have, like, it's the long, the old bowling alley. So that's where we are, right there on.
That's okay.
She was next to Healing Hearts anyway, even when Healing Hearts was there.
Okay, okay. You just took over the kitchen part then. And and are there any services that you're aware of, like for tonight, a shelter, anything for, you know, people with the cold weather?
It is for tonight, not for us. We weren't able to do so. I had inquired previously about doing that, but Pastor Nick before there at Z F A, Nazie F A, Zephyr Hills First Assembly. So they are housing tonight. And so we have been informing, informing all of our patrons that were coming in that they were housing tonight because.
What church was that again?
Um, Zephyr Hills First Assembly.
It's Nazarene.
Nazarene, Nazarene.
The Nazarene, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, you know, we provide funding, an annual funding to CHIPS that deals with the homeless issues and social work and and different things. I with the amount of places, food banks and things that are out there, it's awfully hard to say we can fund one or another and not start a whole thing. I think right now we had made it, we had made a commitment to CHIPS and that that's our partnership right now. So I don't know.
And just like Pastor Fran, we rely on donations as well. And of course, the the money that the city gives is allowing us to pay for Kathy. And Kathy does a lot of the the clearinghouse stuff is 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 finding those resources. But again, when it comes to homeless prevention, a lot of that is based on our donations.
Okay. When when will you be there Wednesday at the, at the, you said you're open Monday, Wednesday and?
From seven forty-five in the morning until after the last feeding, which is at four P M.
Okay.
We have dinner from.
I'd be happy as an individual, come by and see you Wednesday and and contribute. But I I'm not sure as a city, we can make that commitment right now.
Well, and that was the conversation I was having with the city attorney is that we've had other requests. So it's not something that we budgeted for, but we've had other requests from other entities for the same, very similar requests that we denied. So if it is something that we want to do, I think it's a, we need to have a conversation and come up with a plan. But we have turned down others in the past. And to Councilman Spina's point, I don't know how we do one who we've told no to others already in the last few months. So.
Pastor, do you have a business card that I could have?
Um, I do. In my car, I can bring it.
I would like one. And then I'll call you personally. Thank you.
I can tell you, from the board of CHIPS, I have no problem helping out with the Thanksgiving. The feeding, obviously, I can't do anything recurring because it's just, we're.
Wow.
Yeah. Thank you. So I'd be happy to partner with her from the organization to help with the Thanksgiving feeding. So.
That'd be great. Thank you. Yeah, we can take your card and then I'll come see you Wednesday.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chief. All right, I believe, do we have anyone else signed up?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, we do have a Mr. Michael Dale.
Michael Dale, would you come to the podium? Could you state your name and address for the record?
Michael Dale, five seven three zero eight three seven eight street, Zephyr Hills, three three five four two.
Thank you. What, what are you here to see the council about tonight?
Um, the roosters, how they're waking me up at night.
Are wild chickens?
Yep.
Yeah, they've been around here a while.
It looks like you wrote us a letter here.
Did you want to read the letter to us?
Yes, please.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Almost every night, Dan and I go on a walk. In less than ten minutes of the walk, we could see like thirty roosters and they're so annoying. They're so, they wake me up at night. I think the rooster's population is already really large. Can the town please collect all of them and put them in farms? Cats do not even attack them anymore or kick them out of properties. Please so, help everybody get a good night's sleep.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a great job. Thank you. Does anyone have any?
I'd like to say that's a beautiful written letter.
Thank you.
And yes, we all agree, the roosters are a pain in the patootie, right? I don't know legally what we can do to to pick them up. Unfortunately, I, that's above my pay grade, but I, but I'm with you on that. I get woke up by a rooster every day.
Thank you.
All right. City manager?
We will, we'll, I will talk with the the big guy in the back, the big one in the gray jacket there. I'll have a conversation with him. We'll see what we can do, okay? All right, you're welcome.
So we already wrote an email.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
I'm Mike's dad, Jeff Dale, fifty seven thirty eighth street. We already wrote an email to Joel. Joel said that they are protected according to city, according to the code.
That is one of our city ordinances, you know what I mean? They are wild. And several years ago, we had made an effort to collect some, and it's a pretty divisive issue. Some people love them and some people hate them. And we actually had people call PETA on us. And
Yeah.
The protection of ethical treatment of animals. And they literally threatened to sue on some of the methods. You can't catch them. You really probably have to try to kill them.
To trap them.
Trap them. And so it didn't work out very well and we kind of gave up. But, you know, Ebor City, Key West, they're famous for their chickens. So maybe we can embrace them somehow. But we did have a woman that during that time bring in a, she did an oil painting of a, of a rooster that hung in City Hall for a while. I don't know where it is now, but anyway, it. Anyway, it's not an easy solution either way, because once you start, then you're going to get.
It's in the city attorney's office. It's in the city attorney's office.
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for coming and speaking to the council. That was very brave and you did a great job. And thank you. All right, is there anyone else signed up, Ricardo?
I have no one else signed up to speak.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda at this time? Yes, sir? If you could state your name and address for the record, you have three.
My name is Andrew Publico, 37637 Birchcrest Lane, Zeppellos, Florida 33541. Todd, the city planner, suggested I might come down here. About three weeks ago, I walked into the building department and obtained a tree removal permit for a business over on, I live at Sixth Avenue, a high caliber automotive. I've been in the tree removal business for 44 years and I'm coming out of retirement. And he said, you all were developing a tree department and regulations and might want my take on how I got with other municipalities. I've worked out of Volusia, Daytona, Orange County, Osceola County. I've worked, my companies worked for Sam's Wholesale Club, which was the biggest company in the world. That's just my history, but after five years of retirement, I decided to go back to work. And he suggested I might come down here just to present myself to you all. When I did walk in, Jackie said, when I gave her probably two sentences, she said, we want you to cut our trees. I'm not sure the exact definition. We need you to cut our trees. So I got vetted by the, by your building department to meet all the requirements. So I could do business with you all, and I really admire the fact that in Zeppellos, for the first time, whenever I walked in to get a occupational license, it was a requirement that I show proof of insurance and that I am actually, you know, more so in other counties, they just want a few bucks in your license. And so anyway, I just, and that's about it. I don't, I could be long-winded. I'm not here to hold you up, and I really admire that young man. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
My name, my company is the Tree Guy of Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you all for what you do.
All right, I'm moving on to the mayor.
Yes, we have the safety committee coming up.
Thank you for being part of our safety committee. So we have a proclamation for this that we've been asked to do. Whereas road traffic crashes remain a leading cause of death and injury across the globe, with nearly 4,000 lives lost and hundreds of thousands injured every day, leaving families and communities devastated. And whereas the World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims is observed annually on the third Sunday of November to honor the memory of those who have died or been seriously injured in road traffic accidents and to acknowledge the suffering of all affected victims, families and communities. And whereas the 2025 Observance will take place on Sunday, November 16th, and serve as a global call to action to improve road safety throughout, through education enforcement and prevention. And whereas the state of Florida has experienced significant impacts from traffic violence with thousands of fatalities and injuries annually, including vulnerable road users such as pedestrians, cyclists and motorcyclists. And whereas the city of Zeppellos recognizes the importance of community awareness and responsibility, responsible driving practices in reducing road traffic deaths and injuries, and supports efforts to create safer streets for all residents. And whereas acts of remembrance such as candlelight vigils, reading of names and moments of silence offer comfort to those who grieve, those grieving and unite communities in a shared commitment to honor victims and advocate for change. And whereas the theme of World Day Remembrance 2025, Save Streets, Save Lives, reinforces the urgent need for evidence-based actions to prevent further tragedies on our road. And now, therefore, I, Melanie Barmont, some mayor of the city of Zeppellos by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim Sunday, November 16th, 2025, as World Day Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims in the city of Zeppellos and encourage all residents to join in honoring those lost, supporting the injured and bereaved, and working together to make our roads safer for everyone.
We want to stay in front of this. I don't know if we can move it.
We can't move it.
All right. Squeezing a little bit. There we go. One, two, three. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Oh, when he comes by to see you on Wednesday, I'll have you stop by my shop. Would you do that? Is it on the card? I want to take a picture, too. Miss Jody wants a picture of the card. You're welcome. Thank you. All right, moving forward, I believe we have nine consent agenda items. We can pass them all at once or we can pull any for conversation. I'll turn it over to the council.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda items.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, business item number two. I will turn this over to Ted.
I'm taller and I'm not as cute or eloquent as the former speaker. In your council agenda packet, there is a bond resolution. And to speak to the details of the bond resolution, Jeff Larson, our financial advisors here, and also Dwayne Draper, our bond counsel. So with that, I'll ask Jeff to come forward and speak to the details.
And for the record, Mr. Council President, Jeff Larson, financial advisor to the city of Zeppellos, and I reside in the Orlando, Florida area.
Thank you, sir.
And it's a pleasure to be here. As Mr. Beeson mentioned, what we have in front of you today is a bond resolution. When I was here last time, we let you know that we'd be going to New York to talk to the bond insurers, the ratings. That trip was taken. It was very, very successful. I saw on your agenda package that Ted also gave you copies of the ratings reports from Fitch, Moody's and S&amp;P. That was way beyond expectations. So I applaud your city manager and your finance director and your assistant finance director for their hard work. Nicole and I were there as well, trying to keep us on the right path. And that was a three-day effort, going through a two, two and a half hour presentation with three analysts sitting across from you, staring at you and asking questions as you go through in great detail. They do read everything that we send to them in advance. They do Google and search, you know, Zeppellos. They were not familiar with Zeppellos because you've not been to the bond market. I anticipated you'd be an A-rated community. And the reason I say that is because a rating is both your ability and your willingness to pay. That's what they would tell you. The ability to pay is really based on what? Income levels, wealth levels. And if you look at one of the reports from Moody's, they give you different categories. And where you came in as a double A with Moody's, the income levels are like a BA, a double B. Now, as Mr. Poe mentioned, with a lot of your projects coming on board and new employment coming on board and housing projects, we see income levels rising over time. You don't have a lot of debt, so that really helped. There's not a huge debt burden currently on the population. And so that was very, very exciting to get those results, very unexpected. First one came in and it was like a two and a half day period where they call me and then they give us the results. As we left the last meeting with Moody's on the Friday morning, they said outstanding presentation. This was a guy who's come back from retirement, probably been in the business 35, 40 years. I've known him for a long time. I've never heard him compliment a group presenting like he did your group. Okay, they don't want to hear, so, you know. And they each had a specific part in the presentation. We have a pretty good idea, Nicole and I, as to what they want to hear, but they don't want to hear from us. They want to see, you know, what, you know, what things does the council do to support your staff? How do you work with staff? And if you have not read those reports, I encourage you to do so, make them available to the public. But some of the things that really reflected well in the city to get you double A, double A, double A with everybody and indeed with two, they give you a stable outlook. That's good. And they also say you're on the edge of doing better, if you read some of the reports. Robust reserve position. So I noted the income levels, but I also knew you guys are great stewards. Okay, so if you have a penny for Pasco, you use that money for CIP projects. It's for capital. I know the statute says that and the ordinances say that, but you really use your extra funds and you're budgeting surplus every year for capital projects. Okay, because you don't have a lot of debt. You're trying to keep your financial advisor, I think, out of business, maybe indirectly. But very positive operations, very positive budgetary controls. They said a well-embedded management framework. They love your policies. We will take a little kudo praise report that we had helped you get a fund balance policy in place. You already had excess funds sitting there. And Milton came up last time I was here, want to make sure you have excess funds to handle those things. The city manager was grilled about what are your policies with storms, hurricane? I think one of the things you're complimented on is you work closely with the county. And the county has actually funded, I think, 3.3 million to your wastewater operations. And you've got the industrial zone and Billy was able to talk about some of these big projects coming on board. And so it was exciting. Budgetary growth, you do actual to budget every quarter that Jessica does with Ted. And it's transparent. I don't have another client in the state of Florida that does that. It's on your website. Okay, that really flipped out the people there that you take the extent not to, you have access to it and you ask questions, but anybody out there can see exactly what you're doing. Okay? The other thing that was amazing, I didn't know about it until we got in the presentation, Jessica gets a star for this one. She, you have a line item veto. If it's not in the budget, the PO is not approved. They have to get with Ted or Jessica to get approval. And at a certain level, obviously, you get with your city manager. Line item. Most of our communities, oh, the city manager can take it out of this or take it out of that or move it around. No, no, if it's not in the budget, the answer is no. And then they have to get with staff. So there's a lot of discipline there. Obviously, it's exciting for me to come to Zeppellos. I've been doing it when Steve was city manager many, many years ago. You've got growth going on. You've got population going on. You've got annexations going on. You've got these big projects going on. They're adding jobs. They're going to produce more housing. And it's really an exciting period of time to be affiliated with the city. Those are the main things. So notwithstanding the income levels, which we can't do anything about, and that'll change over time, to go from a double B kind of income level to double A, there's like three levels of B, three levels of double A, and that's quite remarkable. So I applaud the city council in terms of your role in that. So I couldn't be happier. What does that mean? We do not need bond insurance. That saves you day one over $155,000. Bond insurers are at best rated double A. Well, you're rated double A. We don't need bond insurers. Why do we see the bond insurers? I didn't know where we would end up. Plus they gave us a day of practice, I think, as we look back on it. That's what I told them when they, they started getting going with it. Yeah. So that's exciting. And it'll save you money upfront because you have your own double A. Interest rates by their nature, the market wants your own double A versus a bond insurer's double A and you're maybe an A-rated credit. So since you're double A from three agencies out of the box, your interest rates will go down at least by 0.10%, okay, which is a big thing on a $31 million financing. That saves maybe $600,000, $700,000 in interest over the life of the deal and debt service. So that's why we're here. The bond resolution is set up for you and Mr. Draper can explain the legalities to you. Let me tell you what it really means. It is your authorization for us to go forth and take the next step. You delegate to your president, to your mayor, your staff to work with us to go get the bond, to go get this preliminary official statement. We read this many times. This is not the latest one, but it's a pretty thick document. When you buy stock, you get a stock off of prospectus. This is what investors would get online from the underwriter. So you're authorizing us, and this is an attachment to the resolution. You're authorizing the team to go forward and get this released in the next day or so and wake up around November 20th, plus or minus. Okay, the good Lord willing, depending on what goes on with macro events and other events and tariffs and Supreme Courts and Gaza and everything else. If the market is calm and feels good, the bonds go into the market that day and we take orders in with our underwriter from about nine to 11, 11:30. Okay, and once the orders are there and they're called an underwriter, because let's say there's a few bonds that's not in order for that morning, they will underwrite 100% of the deal. Okay, you delegate to, because we won't meet again between now and November 20th. You delegate that that's okay so long as four things are in place. The bonds cannot exceed $33 million. Right now, we're $30,650,000 when we ran this the other day. Okay, the term of the bonds, the final bond cannot be more than 31 years. Right now, we're at 30 years. Okay? The true interest cost, which is kind of like the average rate in total of the deal, can't be more than 6%. I set that a couple of months ago when we first started working with you. I wasn't sure where we would come in. And all I was reading on it was tariffs being inflationary and rates were going in the wrong direction. If we did a deal today on the rates that we ran the other day and showed Ted and Jessica, we're more like 4.45 to 4.5%. So we have room there. Okay? And we won't pay the underwriter more than $5.50 per thousand or 0.550. They're right now at $5,000, not 5.50,000. So something really has to go wrong under those delegation parameters to not go forward. If we go forward, one of the things attached to the resolution is called a bond purchase agreement. That is a legal contract. Dwayne has a role in reviewing that as well as the other attorneys. That's where you offer to sell the bonds and the underwriter agrees to buy them. And once we price the bonds on the 20th, we'll know exactly the interest rates to fill in for every maturity. So these bonds go out 30 years. You've got 20 years of single maturities and then the later bonds are kind of lumped together, a couple of them. So it's a kind of a fun day on the 20th to see what orders come in. If there's more orders than bonds, we work to get the rates reduced. It's, that's capitalism and that's laws of supply and demand. It's a fun process. There's also disclosure dissemination agreement attached. What does that mean? You agree to provide investors with the information that's in the POS. Staff work very hard in addition to your audit. They put together a couple of other tables that cities and counties tend to provide. And they will now in the future know that they provide that in every audit. Okay, so that's where we are. It won't happen unless we meet those delegation parameters. One of the things, Dwayne will make sure I sign it closing if we go forward is I'll attest to the fact exactly where we were on those delegation parameters and it was okay. If we price on the 20th, this will close on around the 11th of December. And we plan to come here on the 10th, the ninth, I'm sorry, ninth at 10 o'clock. And I think Mr. Beeson's already let you know who needs to be there to sign things. And I think Mr. Beeson's already let you know who needs to be there to sign things. Dwayne's job is to lay it out on a big table and seal the things and sign it and have a coffee or something while we watch people sign it. And then once you've signed, you're free to go. You remember how this goes on some of the banknotes. So we're excited. I think I covered as quick as I can talk what we're doing today, but we want to step back and see if there's any questions from you that are, they're kind of business procedural questions and also from Mr. Draper if there's any legal questions. And your city attorney has looked at all this and your finance directors looked at all these documents. So congratulations first of all on the double A. That's a huge testimony to you.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'd just say thank you for all you've done and those numbers sound good. So if we can keep that interest down to 4.5 and not, well, it'd be good or better.
And that's, Steve, that's the, I'm sorry, councilman, that's the, that is the, I've known you for a while, that's the average rate. One of the things we can leave with you, if you really want to get into our business, we're happy to, you know, get you lined up and get you on the road and do some other deals with us. But on one of the pages here we've left with Ted and Jessica, it's kind of fun to see. This is like a series of individual bank loans and each maturity has a different yield to it. So like the first yield for September 1, 2026, the one-year bond, that has a yield of 2.74 and then it kind of goes up at the very end is 4.54. And this is like a mortgage where there's more bonds at the end of the maturity. So it's kind of an ascending yield curve as you know, but the average around a 4.45, which is very strong. Yes, sir.
And thank you for that. And I read through those three ratings, very interesting reading, it really was. And it's nice to see from an outsider's perspective what your strengths and weaknesses are. And as I read through it, I was like, you know, there's things we need to work on, but overall really pretty good. But I wanted to try and use it as a tool of saying, okay, how can we make it better? How can we get a little bit sharper? And the one thing that I noticed in there was they, basically it was the income levels of our residents as a whole. So it was important for us to show that the industrial area, I think, is bringing in some higher paying jobs. And we don't necessarily think like that sometimes when we're up here, but we kind of need to develop some type of policy or have a, maybe a workshop just to talk about it to kind of say, okay, are we pushing everything in the right direction that benefits the citizens and going to make their income levels rise? You know, without throwing a bunch of tax on top of them.
Right. And this was, and I think Jessica mentioned she has extras of these that you can look at. This is the material that was put together and we talked about, you know, if I were to close my eyes, I'm looking at you again and go back, where were we 10 years ago? This is a whole new story. This is an exciting story. And I love Culvers, I'm glad you have Culvers. My daughter and I regularly turn right out of City Hall to go to Culvers to drive home. But that doesn't, that's not 80 jobs at above your Polk County average, you know? And hopefully there's not a Culvers person in the audience, I love Culvers. Retail's great, but having those manufacturing jobs and those are each, as Mr. Poe mentioned, serving to have others come that want to hang with Bottica, want to hang with Mitek, want to hang with those companies. So I think, Mr. Smith, you're right on there. Income levels will happen is how, as you have more people move here, housing demands will go up, the type of housing will change, the type of jobs and the type of people that need to work in these places is different than a shopping mall or something perhaps, which is all, it's all good. And you've got a zone for it, you know, and your airport's got good things going on. So it's very exciting news. Congratulations on that.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Do you have any legal questions for Mr. Draper?
No, I don't.
I defer to that.
I didn't read through all that.
Great, thank you. So we recommend that you consider the resolution please tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne as well and Dana.
I think we need to take a vote on this.
Actually, I need to read into the record, the title of the resolution. I didn't write this one, so it may take a minute, mine are normally a little shorter. Resolution 86325, Resolution of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 33 million in aggregate principal amount of City of Zephyr Hills, Florida Capital Improvement Revenue Bonds, Series 2025, for the purpose of financing and or reimbursing the cost of all or a portion of various capital improvements, including without limitation a Public Works Maintenance Facility project and improvements to the Zephyr Park, including without limitation the Alice Hall open meeting and classroom space, covenanted and hidden to budget and appropriate legally available non-add valorem revenues to provide for the payment thereof, making certain covenants and agreements for the benefit of the holders of such bonds, agreements for the benefit of the holders of such bonds, authorizing certain officials and employees of the city to take all actions required in connection with the sale, issuance and delivery of such bonds, taking certain other actions with respect to such bonds, authorizing and approving the negotiated sale of such bonds to the underwriter named herein, subject to the terms and conditions contained herein, approving the form and authorizing the distribution of a preliminary official statement and execution and delivery of a final official statement, authorizing certain officials to deem final the preliminary official statement for purposes of securities and exchange commission rule 15C212, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, appointing the paying agent and registrar, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a disclosure dissemination agent agreement, providing certain other matters relating to the Series 2025 bonds, providing for certain other matters relating to the bonds, providing for conflicts, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
All right. Thank you.
That's it.
Read a book there.
I did read one line twice, I think, but that's all right, no one knows.
Are there any more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
You're maxed out, so.
I move we approve this resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the planning director's report.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and get started with that. Tonight, we're presenting a final planner report on recommended updates that we're proposing to the city's tree preservation and landscape ordinance. This is a planning report, so there's no formal action required tonight. So we want to present, get comments from you and then we'll work on the draft ordinance and bring that back. Just a little background, council expressed some concerns with some of the tree removal practices under the current code and there was an interest by staff and council to tighten up our code and try to work on code updates that would help us increase tree preservation. So I started the process with meeting some of the council members and we talked about identifying issues and concerns that y'all had with the current code. And so we started by just looking at some minor text amendments to the code, but then the more we got into it, more research we did, we decided to do it in-house, but we decided that, well, it's more than just a few text amendments. We wanted to go ahead and make some holistic changes to not only the code itself, but the framework, how it was laid out. So that was important for us. What we did is we did a lot of research, then we kind of settled on what the City of Safety Harbor had done. One of the reasons was they had been pretty proactive in reviewing and updating their code. They actually did about three updates while, in the last decade. So we felt pretty good about that. So what's happened then, Will and I, Will from our staff and I have worked on this code a lot and we feel like we've addressed the concerns that have been raised. What we also did was bring in some professionals. We brought in an arborist and a landscape architect, Ryan and Camille, you'll hear from them tonight, just for their professional review and assessment on what we were proposing to, you know, help get some knowledge of theirs from working with other communities. So some key points we'll be talking about tonight, one major shift is we'll talk about residential lots being required to get a permit, even with HOA and CDDs. We'll have to look at the staffing component of that, but we can do that if that's a decision that's made. A big part of the change will be expanding the way we go about doing our business by getting that tree survey, a conditions assessment, we'll talk about all that tonight, but getting that early on before an engineer does an actual preliminary engineered plant, we're going to be reviewing, assessing that site, the trees that are on it and how best to work with them and preserve them. So that's going to be key. We'll talk about the tree removal table, that's been in the code, the average number of trees breaker, you remove a certain percentage. We'll talk about that tonight. We've got some examples that we'll share with the new code, what that means. And then what we did is we shared kind of the draft where we're at, it's just not the plan, we shared with the city attorney, with Gail at the CRA and Shane with Public Works and Code Enforcement. So we let them review it, we got all their comments and certainly used those as well. So now what we're going to do is we're going to have a PowerPoint that Will's going to kind of present the planning piece of it and then our consultants will jump in at the tail end of it to do their piece. And we can have some Q and A at the end.
Thank you. Evening, everyone. Will McCaw, community planner here with City of Zephyr Hills. And to Todd's point, these were some of the key issues that we were addressing with the update to the tree ordinance. It did start small initially and over the time we realized there was a lot that needed to be addressed. So most of it is to do with the updated grading system that we have for trees. Currently for grand trees, we really only measure them based off of their circumference and that's it. If they're of a specific species and of a specific size, they're grand trees and that's how we're going to treat them for replacements and fees. So we've updated how we're grading our trees, the classifications for them. We've retained the removing, the tree removal table and as well as a few other key changes here. So specifically for those tree classifications, as it stands, the trees right now, anything that is six inches DBH, which is the diameter at breast height of a tree, anything that's six inches or wider, we consider protected. Well, protected kind of came off as you shall not touch this tree. So the language is changing to regulated trees. So now it's not necessarily that you can't touch the tree, it's more so now if you're going to affect a tree that's going to be regulated, then here are the procedures that follow. We're also decreasing from six inches to four inches. This then means that if we're requiring someone to plant four-inch DBH trees when they're doing their landscape plan, they have to protect those trees moving forward. We've also added regulated palms and the consultants will touch on this a little bit later, but specifically for palms, we didn't really have a delineation between what was protected and what wasn't. And palms, you can't really measure the same way as a shade tree. So now we're going to be referring to palms based off of their height. And we've also updated the prohibited species list. We had mentioned in the landscape plan currently, the FISC list, the Florida Invasive Species Council list, we're just referring back to that now specifically regarding what species of trees are going to be regulated. If it's a category one on the FISC list, it will not be allowed to be planted and it needs to be removed whenever someone is submitting a landscape plan. There is one exception with camphor trees, but for the most part, anything category one on the FISC list will be required to be removed. We're retaining the species of all of the grand trees, so these were already existing in our code, which trees we wanted to protect and see in our city. The biggest change however, is we are also now going to look at the condition of the tree. So the ISA, which is the International Society of Arborists, has a specific tree condition rating guideline that they issue every so often. In the most recent guideline, they, we will be adopting that for grading trees. So if a tree is of at least 26 inches at breast height and it's at least a grade three or higher on that list, it's considered a grand tree. This thing goes into some of the ways we're looking at the trees and palms. Again, regulated trees, now we're looking at anything four inches, but it also cannot be anything on the invasive species list. So if it's category one, but it's large enough, we're not going to regulate and require replacement of that tree. Let's get these invasives out and protect the canopy that we have so that the trees we want to see aren't being pushed out. Regulated palms, again, is any species that's at least 10 feet clear trunk height. So that is probably the biggest addition when it comes to the specific protections is adding palms and adding those conditions. For the removal process, we're going to update the removal permit requirements. Now, any tree that's going to be removed regardless of the conditions, will have to have a tree removal permit submitted, which means a certified arborist will have to look at that tree. We currently require the tree removal permit even for dead trees, but now we're just, because we want to assess trees based off ISA standards, they're going to be required to be looked at by a certified arborist. Typically, if a tree removal company is licensed and insured, they're going to have an ISA certified arborist on their staff. So it's not an extra burden for the city to track and make sure, okay, did you get an arborist? It's, when you're submitting this report, they're going to attest to that and it's one less step that the city has to really worry about, making sure that the experts are actually weighing in and it's not Joe Schmuckatelli down the street coming to chop down your trees. So for removal of regulated trees, this is any of those trees that are four inches wider or those regulated palms, we're allowing them to be removed. Again, this is not saying do not touch these trees. However, a qualified removal would say it's a safety hazard, whether there's branches that are potentially going to damage the home or it could potentially be a risk for the public. If it's damaged by a storm or if it's infested with disease or insect species, those are reasons that we would say, okay, this is a valid reason, go ahead and remove that tree. If someone is planning to add something like a pool in their backyard or a shed, if the tree's in the way, we're not going to say you can't build a pool in your backyard, submit your permit, remove the tree. So if it's also in the best interest of the public, for instance, if Shane's team has identified a tree that needs to be removed or trimmed back, that is another reason we would just say, go ahead and remove that tree. So one of the reasons why we're adding the residential tree removal permit, and this is specifically for anyone within single-family residential districts, if you're a single-family home, you don't have to submit a permit currently. However, we end up with situations like you see on the screen here where because single-family residential homes aren't required to remove a permit, if two or three lots are purchased and someone is building homes on those lots, they can remove as many trees without requiring any permits currently.
Is that 12?
Yes.
And yes.
Yes.
I wondered how that happened.
And this was before the final trees were taken down. I went and took some photos out. But this was a specific example I wanted to provide because currently our ordinance is pertaining to any tree removal associated with a development order. That is then when we step in and say you need a tree removal permit. Because of that, things can escalate pretty quickly. Now, there are exceptions. We don't want to overburden everyone with, hey, I'm sorry, you've got a tree in your backyard that's going to cause your insurance to get denied because you've got branches hanging over your roof. So if trees are causing or at risk of causing damage to a property, say the foundation of a home, say there's branches hanging over the roof, or if they're proposing to expand their building, then they are not required to pay a permit fee. They simply have to submit a certified arborist statement saying that yes, this tree is a danger to that property. In that case, then they wouldn't pay the fee, they'd provide us with that statement from a certified arborist and they'd be allowed to remove the tree. Additionally, we added an exception for Public Works Department. We don't want to slow down any work that they're doing, they're already trimming quite a few trees when it comes to the right of way, especially along the alleyways and stuff like that. Rather than require Shane to go out and get an arborist at every step of the way, we're exempting Public Works from the requirement of tree removal permits. So the fee schedule for our removal permit currently is exactly the same, we're not increasing the fees. We are however, adding a homesteaded reduction in the fee. So again, because we don't want to overburden the residents in the city, but we still want to protect the urban canopy that we have, the homesteaded properties within the city will have a, almost half a fee for most trees. For larger grand trees, we still will have an increased fee, but they'll pay less than a developer would come behind and remove a tree. For larger grand trees, we still will have a an increased fee, but they'll pay less than a developer would come behind and remove a tree.
Is it the you do the replacement ratio of five to one or pay the fee? It's not both.
Or any combination of the two. So for instance, and I'll go over that. I've got a couple of examples, but yes. You can replace the trees at the given replacement ratio. Or you can pay the replacement fee based off of how wide the tree is. We are expanding the replacement ratio. Currently, it only goes up to four. We're changing that now so that at the highest for a 30 inch tree, you're going to need to replace five trees or pay a fee. Again, you can do any combination of the two. If you're going to replace with two or three trees. We would calculate then based off the inch per inch basis, how much still needs to be paid in a fee.
Well, since the city manager already interrupted you, I'm going to jump in and going back to the permit.
Yes, sir.
If they have. A statement from a certified arborist, we're not requiring a permit then, correct?
Correct. They would not be required to have a permit and they would not pay the fee. They just have to submit the statement from a certified arborist.
Okay, so there's no permit and there's no replanning.
Correct. No, no requirement to have them replant.
Okay.
Based off feedback.
Can I interrupt you two now since they started?
Absolutely.
So a homestead, like a commercial property will pay the $100 fee, say. And but the homesteaded property would pay 50. If they have, if the homesteaded property has that certificate, they pay nothing.
They pay nothing. Correct. This would be only in instances where they're trying to remove a tree that they don't have an exemption for.
What would what would be the average cost of getting a certified arborist to verify?
So I don't know the cost off hand. I believe our.
If you'll allow me.
Absolutely, yes.
So I had a tree in my backyard. It was a water oak. It was 60 feet tall. And it was probably about 70 years old. It was in pretty good condition, but it was making my husband nervous because if it fell in the in a hurricane, it would it would have ripped the trees up. It would have ripped up our 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 slab. But I told him, I'm not convinced that the tree is sick. And then I hear, I call around, I try to get a certified arborist. They all work for tree companies, so they're all motivated to get you to cut the tree down. That's the problem with that. I want someone to come, you know, do borings and look at it. I want to make sure it was like healthy enough. We could have chopped the whole, all the limbs off. And they would have grown back and it would have been beautiful because the trunk itself was in perfect condition. So, you know, we took down a perfectly gorgeous tree because I couldn't verify that it was not sick. Because I couldn't find somebody who wasn't, who didn't have, who didn't have a motivation to cut it down. So that's where we need to do a better job. If if in fact, we're going to require that, then we should have an arborist to go out to the site. And and you know, as much as I like the idea of having public works be exempt. I think there needs to be a system of checks and balances. No, no, you know, no offense to Shane and his team. But the reality is, is that these, some of these trees, we need to say whether it's popular or not. Because that's the purpose of having a tree.
Well, and that's why I brought it up. I mean, I wrote down exempt public works too, because I'm not sure that's a good policy. I mean, I I I have a problem with us exempting ourselves from everything, number one. Number two, I think we should have. An arborist consultant, which I hate, or an arborist list that we can provide a property owner. So they'd have be able to and then Public Works could also contact this person, but you know. I think everything's looking really good, but I think we we're going to have to tweak a few things.
Can I just add in on one thing on this? So the reason we're we're stating that that if they have something from an arborist or no permits or because state statute requires that it's a preemption.
Yeah, I don't mind them getting it. I'm just saying we need to make it. Arborists available to them easier so they don't run into some of the problems. We got a lineup.
Come speak into the mic, please.
Your name and correct, name and address for the record.
Brian Brian Volker with Chenmore Associates and. Miss Wilk is done to the kind of comment of what you were saying. So a consulting arborist will be the right person to do the evaluation of the tree because they're not, look, they're not benefiting whether the tree gets removed or not. And there's a thing, so besides being an ISA arborist, there's also a thing called TRQ, Tree Risk Assessment Qualification. It's a special, it's a sub certification that Camille and I both have and a lot of a lot of people in the industry, a lot of arborists should have. Basically, it's a method to determine what's the level of risk associated with the tree. So there's ways to say to do testing and then you can even do high level testing. If you really want to get into tomography to see how hollow the actual tree is. So there's things you can do, but it should be, you definitely want to have an arborist that doesn't do tree care. Or I guess you should, where there's no bias, I guess.
That's really what I was looking for. I was willing to pay $500 for someone to come tell me I should save this tree.
The average person's not going to be willing to pay $500. So we're going to have to find a way to make it. If we're going to require it or have it waived, then we should need to make it easier for them to access it. In my opinion, yes, ma'am.
Camille Scalitz, I'm also with Chenmore. I would just like to say I used to work for a tree company and we had. Seven people and five of which were certified arborists. So there are tree companies out there that do ethical work and will come to you and assess your tree. And determine if the tree really needs removal or if there's a different mitigation option on there. So it is a struggle to find certified arborists that can do that sometimes, but there are tree companies that can. And as far as the city providing a list of those companies. There has been some issues with that before, but that an International Society of Arboriculture does have a list of certified arborists in your area. And also the County Extension Office of UF IFIS. They also provide a list of arborists in your area that can help you with things like that.
Can I just ask you a question? Since since you work for a tree company, what does something like that cost? What if I had a tree I wanted to remove, what come and evaluate it? How much am I going to look to pay?
If if I'm a tree care professional. If you're looking just for a consult, it's going to be my hourly rate, which might just be 100 bucks an hour, you know? If you're looking for a tree consult and I think it's a removal, then I'm going to waive that. But that's where you could get into some ethical issues. But it really is finding the right tree company and it can be a struggle. I'm sorry you had to deal with that.
I I think. They only have to do a an arborist report if they want to be exempt from the permit, correct? So if they if they're willing to pay the permit fee at or in the replacement, then they don't have to do an arborist.
Oh, well, okay.
No, the so the if they were going to do a tree removal. If they weren't exempt, they would have to go through the tree removal permit, which does require a certified arborist. And the exemption just removes the tree removal permit and the fees associated with it. But in both scenarios, you need a certified arborist.
The comments for Public Works exemption, Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. I'm going to use an example that happened today for us for Public Works. Nine times out of 10, when we are assessing a tree, it's an emergency situation, it's public safety. It could be near a bus stop, where people park cars, what have you. Last night we had a storm. We had a tree drop some limbs on 19th Street and First Avenue. And we went out and looked at the tree first thing this morning to assess it. And I gave the go ahead for them to take the tree down. The tree was an old water oak. That is in a declining condition, isn't going to get any better. And when I looked up at the limbs, I had my car parked under it. And I like, I should know better to be even parked under this tree. That's how bad it was. So we gave it the kiss of death and I authorized them to take it down because it's a public safety. Issue and nine times out of 10, they are for us. It's a hurricane. We have a tree across the road. We don't have time to, you know, with all due respect to the arborist. We don't have time to consult with an arborist. We have to get that tree down and get it off the road or what have you. So that was my comment to Will putting this together to give Public Works an exemption. For the permitting process because it's an emergency situation with us.
Personally, I believe Public Works should be exempt because y'all know what you're doing with the trees. You know if it's dead or if it's going to fall over. So I mean, why have to go through all that when when it's a danger?
And and we do, it's something that I should probably have one of my staff go get trained as an arborist. We did have an arborist, but he left the city. And, you know, we evaluate trees. We go out, we'll have somebody call us and say, I have this tree in my yard and it's on the right of way. And if we evaluate the tree and it's a live green tree and it doesn't need to come down, we don't take it down. But if it's a potential safety threat. We take it down because nine times out of 10, they're going to hurt somebody or kill somebody. And I've been through a tree fatality too, so. Maybe I'm a.
I had one, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so and prior to adding the exception that Shane had requested. We do also in our existing code have exemptions for any tree removal permits for emergencies. And that was something we wanted to add to the specific ordinance. But I also wanted to carve out that not only are they exempt from the tree removal permit and fees, but also from having a certified arborist. Like to Shane's credit, they used to have an arborist and getting one trained might benefit the city. But regardless, the ordinance as is proposes an exemption for them. So this tree replacement ratio and fee schedule that we have up here is specific to regulated trees. So this doesn't quite get into grand trees. So this is anything that we're not super concerned over. This would then be the grand tree replacement fees. So they're a little bit higher. And the rating starts at 26 inches because that's the bare minimum for a grand tree. We use the same replacement ratio with grand trees as we do with regulated trees. So anything greater than 30 inches will be five to one. There's only four inches from 26 to 29 and those are replaced at a four to one ratio. But the fees do continue to go up until you get trees larger than 60 inches. And again, for grand trees, we also have that homesteaded exemption or reduction in fee costs. And for an example, for we've talked about a couple up to this point. I grabbed just the idea of someone having a 50 inch oak tree from their property. I didn't specify species because obviously we have a variety of them. Based off of a 50 inch oak saying it was a grand tree at this point, it would be a $7,500. Replacement fee for a homesteaded individual. Or they could replace it with five other trees or any mixture of the two. Say they planted three, four inch trees, then they're really only going to have the remaining balance of 38 inches. And so the fee would be significantly reduced. And again, going back to the exemption we had spoken about for residential units. This enumerates that in in this instance, if he wanted to remove it because there was an ADU they were planting in the backyard. Then they would not have to pay that fee so long as they had a certified arborist that ratified that, hey, this is in the way of their proposed addition. I also looked at the flip side of it. We talked about adding in residential removal fees. Well, I also wanted to include an I, an example of a development. So in this instance, we had a tree survey that was provided to us as well as a site plan. And it showed pretty much all the trees removed. So I gave you 147 trees that were removed that were under the new language regulated trees. Which would result in 2,630 inches of total DBH to be removed. And a $318,000 replacement fee for this developer. Now, they could replace a number of those trees. The minimum, if they were to do just replacements is 388. If you look at the just below that, there is the current standards. It would have still cost them $307,000 based off our current standards. The only main difference is we don't protect anything under six inches currently. We're proposing to go down to four. Additionally, the replacement ratio is the largest difference between the two. And as you can see, they require 160 less trees to be planted. So this kind of makes the difference here is we're requiring more trees to be planted. So if someone doesn't pay the full fee, then the number of trees they have to plant will be greater. It's a way for us to really restore the urban tree canopy. But ultimately, at the start of the procedure, before we get to someone coming to us with a development order showing all 147 trees removed from a site. They need to go and get a certified arborist and a tree survey to evaluate their site. And then we'll look at, well, what makes sense? Because we're retaining the tree removal table that we currently have. They're still only able to remove a certain percentage of trees from their site. So this then encourages, well, if I can only remove a certain percent, I'm not going to touch those grand trees because they're going to cost me an arm and a leg. So this is the way that we came about. Retaining the same fee structure. We're not increasing the burden on the developer, but we're making it such that moving forward. They're going to prioritize protecting the trees on their site. We've also updated the city tree trust fund information. On the left, you can see the current tree trust fund monies, which says we can purchase replacement and replant trees. We can use trained arborists for education. And we have in the current ordinance that we fund enforcement of the tree preservation ordinance. Doesn't enumerate how, but it does. So our updated tree trust fund monies, the plan for those is again, purchasing replacement trees and replanting them. Contracting with arborists to review permits as a potential way to use the city tree trust fund. And using trained arborists for educating staff for the public on tree removal and tree retention, preservation, hopefully. As well as other services or programs as deemed by the city manager, whether that's putting those gator bags around trees that the city has planted. So that we're maintaining those and keeping those trees growing. And with that, I will hand it over to the consultants.
I'm just going to kind of.
Your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. Brian Volker with Chenmore Associates. I don't live in Zephyr Hills, a little south. I'm 261 Aspen Way in Davie, Florida, 33325.
Thank you.
Sure. So as Will mentioned, you know, the purpose they got with us, the city got with us to help refine the landscape code. Which is landscape and tree protection guidelines with a focus on the tree protection ordinance and what we can do to to improve upon it. So Camille and I have a lot of experience with, we've actually written some codes for other cities and we also enforce codes with other cities. And we've dealt with tree permitting. We've dealt with tree permitting for I don't know how many municipalities, probably 15 or 20 or more. So we, what we do is we kind of evaluate all of them to figure out what makes sense, what works, what's practical and try to come up. You know, we say, what are the best ideas and let's bring them forth in this situation. So what we want to do is we wanted to conform with best industry, best management practices. We wanted to be the city's code to be in compliance with other municipal ordinances. And the ultimate goal is to try to better protect the urban canopy. So this is kind of some, we just touched on some of the things that Will went over a lot of them, but we're going to touch again on some of the some of the things that we did. So obviously, or proposed, obviously, single family homeowners, including them. And pretty much all municipal tree codes will do this because most of the city's trees are on private property. You're not protecting those, you're not, and all those get removed and the city loses half its canopy. So also the we we decided, we proposed to change the the definition from protected tree to regulated tree. Because protected sounds like it's preserved. We're saying regulated means, you know, it it can be impacted if you have a valid reason. Also, we propose to change the the size threshold from six to four inches to kind of be in line with other ordinances. Also, for the grand tree calculations, we looked at what was originally thought up. There were tables that said the tree has to be a certain size, typically a certain species and above a certain size, so above 26 inches. Then it had to be a certain height, a certain spread and have a certain condition. And then you add up all those points and you get to a certain score. What we were finding is we'd say, all right, let's let's do a hypothetical scenario. We have a 26 inch live oak tree. That that and we, you know, we've seen probably hundreds of live oak trees in our time. So we say, what would the the height and spread be for that tree? And would that be a specimen per per the previous ordinance and it wouldn't? So basically we said, all right, maybe the height and spread are arbitrary. Let's just look at, is it 26 inches? And is the condition above above a certain rating? So this way, there's more emphasis on the condition of the tree than just an arbitrary height and spread. Also, we we found out that some trees, let's say you had a massive tree that's a, you know, huge height and spread, but a really poor condition. That might meet the specimen rating, I'm sorry, the grand tree rating, but it doesn't deserve that rating if the score, if the condition's not there. So we said, let's just look at the trunk diameter and the condition. And the other thing with that is everyone can, everyone can. And the other thing with that is everyone can, everyone can measure trunk diameter the same way. Height and spread are very hard to duplicate and someone could go out and possibly trim the edges of the tree to get below that size threshold. So that was our thought on that. We also added, uh, what was it? A pecan and, um, hickory to the list of, uh, potential grand tree species because they're here all over the city. You have large, large versions of that. So moving on, um, tree condition ratings, we said, let's go with, um, the industry standard. And that's, uh, we referenced the guide for plant appraisal and that's the method we use. And the reason for that is you have to have a, you have to have a way to say, is the tree good, fair, poor? And what does that mean? If, if you're not following the, the guidelines from guide to plant appraisal, it means nothing. But essentially, when you look at the ratings, good, fair, poor, poor essentially means the tree is not likely to improve. It's going to continue to decline. Fair means it's got defects, but you can possibly improve it to good. That's generally the, the cutoff. And also we're saying that it, to do the rating, uh, it should be done by an ISA arborist. So also another thing we thought about is nuisance trees, the, the, the FISC category ones are exempt. So you wouldn't need a permit to remove them. But we noticed in our, um, we're, we're doing consulting work for the city now. We've done inventory of the parks and we, we look at the historic neighborhoods on a bimonthly basis for the city owned trees. And we've noticed there's a lot of camphor trees that serve as street trees. So if these were removed and not mitigated and they're getting older, they're going to start to fail over time. If they're removed and not mitigated, then you lose a lot of canopy. So Camille came up with the idea to say, hey, what if we just look at, you know, the, the smaller ones? We'll, we'll consider them just like all the other invasive exotics. But if they're grand tree size, let's at least do one to one replacement. So you're at least getting one, one tree back in the ground versus for each of these that come out. So you'll start to replace that canopy over time.
And one thing to note with that is there's no permit application fee associated with the permit for the 26 inch, uh, camphor trees. It's purely just so that way we can have a one to one replacement for those residential lots.
Can I ask you a question? These trees, we, we call them, I think, rain trees. The, what are the ones with the, the turn kind of an orangey red?
Oh, Japanese golden rain tree.
In the, in. You know what I mean? The ones I mean, I'm, that sounds a little more exact with what I'm thinking. No, no, the ones that are right around 10.
Yeah, those are.
In fall, they come out.
Japanese golden rain trees.
Are they kind of a, hmm?
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I call rain tree. Okay. Are they, um, nuisance trees or kind of, but they're kind of?
Yeah.
Pretty, yeah.
They attract those weird bugs.
All right. I just wondered about that because I, you know, they kind of give us a fall flavor, but I thought they were kind of a nuisance tree.
Right, right, yeah.
So the removal of those trees on a residential property that isn't undergoing development would not necessarily be required. But if the resident did want to remove that tree, they could do so without a permit. In regards to a development permit, the removal of that would be required with the issuance of the development permit.
It would be included in the tree count.
It would be included in the tree count.
In a development.
In a development, yes, but it would, we would also require the removal if it is a category one.
Okay.
All right. So we mentioned that. And I think these are your, or is this my last thought or your first line?
I think this is me.
Yeah.
So we also updated the, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Camille Scalitzey, also with Chenmore in South Florida. We updated the tree protection zone to define protecting the canopy and the roots of a tree. A lot of times we see issues with the canopy being protected, but we have root issues and we lose a tree in development two, three years down the line from some root defects. So with that, we're hoping to preserve some of these trees throughout construction. And additionally, we are proposing fines for tree abuse. There are currently no penalties for prohibited acts such as topping a tree or removing a tree without a permit. So we're proposing the rates be at approximately 50% of the removal fees, um, just to kind of help out there. And finally, um, tree pruning and maintenance wise, the code previously had some references to thinning. This is an old practice that we've actually learned recently to do the opposite of. Instead, we take weight out from the ends of branches and this helps take load off of that branch union and preserve some of our older trees. And it really specifically helps with live oaks. They have some of the densest wood there is. So we took out those thinning references and replaced them with end weight reduction to help bring that back up to current specifications. We also included specifications on root pruning. So when we have construction projects where we are going to be getting close to the roots of trees, we can make sure that everything's cut cleanly so it can regrow properly. And both of these additions will help us promote proper tree structure before our hurricanes and after the hurricanes too. So hopefully with that, we can help save some of these large, beautiful trees you guys have. And then on the same lines, we are proposing notification for major pruning on grand trees. That would be those trees 26 inches or over that are three or above on the condition rating scale. And the idea here is we would just like to get some notification before any major pruning is done on lines six inches or greater. And that would be just a certified arborist submitting a notice saying, hey, we're going to conduct this pruning on this tree. It's the approval from the city and goes on. And it shouldn't be any sort of extra encumbrance for the tree company because they should probably have an arborist on staff if they're pruning it.
And honestly, you, you know, no one should ever hire a tree care company that's not, that, that, that doesn't have an ISA certified. You know, to, to, to tell people what the people do and the work, you know, that's a, you know, a lot of, but not every county and city. Sometimes they'll say, you need your business license, now you can go cut trees. But you also need, really should require that they be ISA certified arborists to do the actual.
Just to clarify, I'm not sure if we made this clear. The ISA, uh, or International Society of Arboriculture is kind of our sort of education and our continuing education as arborists that is acknowledged throughout the entire country and also internationally. So while licensed and insured shows that you have a business record, certified arborist shows that you are a tree care professional who is actively staying updated in all of our new research and developments. I'm not sure if we made that clear.
Yeah, I think that's it. So if there's any questions, I cannot stress enough that they were really, really pivotal in getting that ordinance all the way through. And originally for grand trees, we looked and created our own guide for grading. So they were pivotal.
Just a couple of observations before we get to the Q and A. You know, we have that tree removal table. We didn't talk a lot about that, but you know, it's the average number of trees per acre and percentages you're allowed to remove. And right now there's a discretion at, in the code that the planning director can sign off on that. And, you know, and if council isn't satisfied with that, it could be elevated to city manager. It could be elevated to council if y'all want to be involved with that level of detail. However, I, I do believe that now how we're going to be much more proactive at the pre-application stage of getting those tree surveys with the conditions assessment and having those discussions before. I, I, I think some of those concerns that councils had before, I think we're going to mitigate by having this framework set up to do that. You know, a couple of other things, we're going to need a, a certified arborist with that TRAQ certification. So that's something we're going to need, uh, you know, that there's going to be comments. You'll receive comments on the residential tree permits. We got to know that going in. But we, we kind of, as a staff and our consultants felt it was kind of important. It is pretty standard, uh, to see that on residential permits, but just so y'all are aware of that, but.
If, is that a position that, you know, we might, because of our growing size of the city, that we might share that person between Public Works and the, and the planning department? Or would it be enough to keep them busy just doing plan review?
Yeah, I, I tell you, I, I'd mentioned in my preliminary comments. Right now, uh, the way we work it is we get a tree removal permit application. I send Carlos out there and Carlos takes pictures and he reports back. And a lot of times we'll look at it, but that takes time and that's without any residential permits. So we, we can talk about that if that's the council's desire to do residential permits and figure out how we can best handle that.
Well, earlier this year too, I mean, uh, I gave the city manager and the HR director job descriptions for the engineer that I recommended we hire that we haven't yet and an arborist position. So, you know, I, I think those are things that as we go, uh, especially if we're going to get into more detail like this. You know, we, there's a lot of ways to use an arborist here that, that we, I think we could utilize.
There are times I don't feel comfortable making that decision after Carlos takes the pictures. It's difficult. And the other comment that came up by some of the council members was HOA and CDDs. And I don't believe, Matt, there's any restrictions. You know, we, we do have the, the state law that comes into play, but the HOAs and CDDs, we can require residential permit is correct? Same as any other residential. Okay.
What about HOA rights of way? Because I mean, that's where I sent you the pictures of.
That was the other.
Ours. I mean, they go through there and they just.
We could review that like with anything. Public Works won't be involved with that since it's not a public right of way. So we, we can look at that.
They need to pull permits because they go in there.
This ordinance isn't, doesn't just address residential plots. I mean, it's part of residential, but.
Yeah, correct.
It's commercial property essentially then.
All right. But yeah, I definitely think they need to be included.
So we're all here to add a little Q and A if there's any questions.
Mr. President, if I could, so this is actually a question for our staff, for you, Mr. Vanderburg and, and Mr. LeBlanc. But my, I do have some concerns about spending the tree fu- trust fund on administrative expenses like, like paying for a staff person. My, my question is, when's the last time that we actually planted grand trees in a public right of way along, you know, 12th Avenue or some other, an older section of town, not just in one of the newer neighborhoods? You know, we're using that money now for that purpose.
Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. Typically with the tree mitigation fund, we've done park trees and not street trees because a lot of your street trees aren't irrigated. We don't have the staff to manually water the trees and establish the trees. And you've got overhead power lines and all kinds of conflicts, underground utilities. So planting trees in the right of way can be complicated.
Do we know what the balance is of the, um, tree trun- trust fund?
I don't know, but my second question was, um, Duke Energy and those folks, they're kind of the worst, they're the worst offenders. They come in there, they just gouge out the middle of the tree. Are they protected from our regulation?
I'm pretty sure Duke, yes, they have better lobbyists than we do. Yeah.
They have a stronger lobby. Okay, thanks.
So yes, we know that, yes, sorry, a couple. We've not planted trees in the right of way, uh, too much. That is something that we had talked about. We have utilized the tree mitigation fund for, um, to, to enhance landscaping at the tennis center when we built that. We've talked about using the, it at the, uh, city yard to meet the planning requirements there. The question about our fund balance, uh, yes, we know what it is. I don't know what it is off the top of my head. Last time it was over 100,000, I think. Oh, okay.
75,000?
Thank you. And I think we used about 100,000 at the tennis center, I think.
And I think to answer your other question, public utilities like Duke Energy are exempt from all of our regulations.
Do we have any other questions?
I, I have.
Oh, go ahead. I just, I, I'm just going to give you a scenario under this. I'm a, I'm going to give you two scenarios. I'm a homeowner. I bought a house. I just want to get rid of a nice tree that I don't like. How, what's my process? And then the second scenario is I'm a homeowner and I want to add onto my house and there's a tree in the way. Explain how those go through the process.
Sure. Will McCaw, community planner, city of Zephyr Hills. So for the first scenario, if it was a tree that you didn't have associated with any sort of building and it wasn't a danger to the structure, you would submit a tree removal permit, consult with an arborist before you submit the permit and get them to assess the tree. The tree assessment would tell us how large it is, so how much the fee would be associated with it and the condition, whether it was going to be a grand tree, just a regulated tree, if it was an invasive and didn't need mitigation. We'd find that out from the arborist, who is typically the person you'd consult to remove your tree. And then you would pay the fee or place replacement trees on your property. With one tree, depending on the size, it could be just one tree, it could be up to five. Or you could do a mix where say you planted two replacement trees and then paid $3,000 in a replacement fee. If you were doing an add-on to a new home, say someone moved into a property and wanted to put a sunroom on the back of their property and there was a tree in the way, that's one of the exemptions. They would not have to pay a tree removal permit fee. They wouldn't have to replace the tree. They would just have to submit that certified arborist statement stating, this tree is this condition, this is the species, this is the size of it, it's in the way of a proposed development. So both of those scenarios, it's a little different, but for the most part, if it's a tree that you're trying to remove for development, you wouldn't pay the fee. If you're just removing it for aesthetic reasons, that's the scenario where you would.
Okay. And really, does, what we want to do is, is maintain the canopy in, in the city. And I, I mean, for some reason I have a problem when somebody buys a house with great trees and they cut them down. I'm like, why'd you buy the house, you know?
Yeah.
Why, why would you do that? And it's expensive too.
Chenmore, I think, looking at what's, um, like kind of elaborating what we'll, on, on your question. I think if the, if the scenario is, in other words, if, if you apply for a tree removal permit application, you have to have, um, you have to have a reason for the removal. And so if you're not proposing construction and the tree is not a, a risk or, or hazard, the application could be denied because you're not meeting the criteria. I, I don't believe, I don't believe that, um, you don't like the tree would be, I mean, I think. Yeah, I think just, just that, yeah, because there, there's like a list, you know, you can't, that's the whole purpose of, of processes. And we don't want to just cut trees that, you know, you have to have a reason, so.
Now, I will say that a lot of, I mean, the insurance companies are becoming a bigger player in the trees.
Well, and actually I, I will, we'll both bring this up because this is the bane of our existence with the insurance companies. So, so, um, what will happen is, um, the insurance companies, and usually they're not arborists and they don't know, they don't know explicit about trees.
Right.
So what happened is they'll, they'll, you'll have, um, branches of a tree over the, over your roof. And they'll say, well, we can't insure you or we'll raise your insurance if, if the branch, if you have branches over your, over your roof. Meanwhile, if you get an arborist to assess the tree, so, so you have two options, right? Insurance says, insurance company says, oh, your tree is a problem. So you either have to hack the hell out of it and remove half the canopy because it's over your roof, or you have to remove the tree. That's a lot of cost. You can just have an arborist assess the tree if the tree's healthy and there are no defects for the tree. There's no reason why the tree's going to fail. Then that arborist letter to the insurance company would, would basically allow them to keep the tree without having to remove the branches.
But it resolves them, it absolves them of responsibility for paying for it if the roof, if the tree, if a limb falls on your roof.
And al- also on that note, with the arborist and cutting a tree straight up at the house, that's going to increase your risk. If we look at trees and their structure, those low lying branches over your roof are actually what we call protector branches. They lessen the fall distance when, if a tree failure were to occur. So what the insurance company is, is asking of us is the exact opposite of what we've studied and what we've seen actually in storm failures and storm events and years and years of tree work and research. So this letter isn't just some willy nilly, oh, the tree's fine. It, it's actually backed by what we've seen in our research.
Elaborate on their point, you know, they'll say, oh, this branch is close to the roof. At meanwhile, and they'll say, we want to remove that. That's the branch that's maybe a foot above your roof. If that fails, it has a foot to go, but all the branches above it, if you remove that branch, now everything above it can fall, is, is going to fall right on roof because you don't have the roof to protect the, the tree. So.
You know, the other thing, we had that example, I think it was the 50 inch tree and it was what, $7,500? Or five to one ratio? And the purpose is to really get people to plant trees, get the canopy. So $7,500 versus five trees, well, three, three inch caliper, 10 foot tree, I think we estimated $300, $400. So times that, times five, they're probably going to plant the trees instead of paying that big fee. And I don't know, may, maybe we hadn't talked about it, maybe instead of five, three inch, maybe if they plant a little bigger tree, maybe you give them a little bonus, do one less tree. I, I know there's different ways we could, we could look at that, I guess. I, I know, there's different ways we could, we could look at that, I guess.
If you look at the cost of the, say, the three inch tree or 50, say, then the actual install cost is dependent on.
Double that.
Well, 2.73, type like when we do calculations for what's actually the cost, you know, it's the raw cost for that tree and then the install, it's actually, the final install cost is going to be 2.7 to three times that raw cost. You got to think about that when you're talking about the actual cost of these costs.
Right. I do want to add, um, back to that first scenario, say where it was a tree that you just didn't, they just wanted to remove. Um, in the event, like they had clarified, if they want to remove it and they don't have a valid reason, staff is able to deny it. We can also consult with an arborist to confirm why we're denying it. If you then remove it anyway, the tree removal fee and the replacement ratio is doubled if we find out that you removed a tree without getting a permit or removed one for an invalid reason and then didn't seek approval from the city. And that's currently in our, our code as it is now, so we're carrying that over to continue that.
I have a question, probably with Todd. Um, we didn't really talk about this, but you mentioned that the percentages on the, the.
Table.
The table.
Yep.
And, um, the, the percentage of trees you can re- remove from a site. So let's pretend I'm a developer and I have 20 acres and it's a hundred percent tree covered right now, but I want to build a subdivision. So.
Two hundred townhomes.
Yeah, two hundred townhomes. So according to this table, if there's more than 40 trees on an acre, I can remove up to 50%.
I believe that's correct, yes.
According to our table.
It's up to 50% now, I believe.
Perhaps 50%.
Yeah. And with that, now each, each tree itself would need a specific reason for removal in addition to that 50%.
So we would require them to do like a tree survey and they could take out the, not, you know, the nuisance trees and that wouldn't count, correct? Or that would count towards their number of trees they're removing.
If it was over four inches.
Over four inches, yeah.
Right.
New stance.
So, and I mean, I'm saying this, I'm bringing this up because you have to be reasonable to a degree if somebody's buying property to develop. I mean, I mean, you don't really want to be reasonable, but we have to.
We're doing the early proactive work again before you get in that tree survey and the conditions assessment, so we can sit down and have a logical discussion with the developer prior to getting the engineer to involve, so we can, every site's going to be different.
Okay.
And we look at the age of the trees.
Right, right, okay. But there is a, there's some relief for somebody that wants to do it, you know, for their development. Now, to take the scenario of North Avenue and 12th Street, if this was all in effect right now, they wouldn't have been able to remove all those trees. But why, why wouldn't the, the development plan have prevented some of that?
Um, because they were removed residentially without a development order, the, it's individual lots that are doing construction.
But if this was in place, they couldn't have done it.
Correct.
To that degree.
Certainly not to the degree that they had done.
Like all of them.
Exactly. They essentially clear cut the site. They would only have been able to remove the trees where there was a structure that was proposed. So it would have saved a significant number of trees on that site.
Right. All right. Thank you.
I have a question. Um, so the permits I'm assuming would be handled through the building department?
Uh, it'd be planning department.
Be the planning department.
Yes.
Okay, because, uh, let's use Lance's scenario, somebody buys a house, they got a big 50 plus inch grando, they don't want it because they don't want to have to rake leaves or whatever. But then they hear, well, if you add on to the house, then it doesn't matter. How are we going to start, you know, I mean, I think we need to kind of tie it in with the building department somehow where they're, they've proposed, they've got a, a building permit to do the addition.
Hmm.
And then usually you got a year to get the work done, or we can maybe go back and get that, just like you said, we can get them on a double thing if they take it down anyways. We might want to coordinate with the building department on that to say, okay, if they're going to, this is the reason they're taking a tree out, well, where's your building permit for that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think we've recently run into something where, uh, business had submitted building permits for an addition for a carport on the rear of their property and it expired and they had to come back and submit again. So I think in this scenario where someone submits a building permit just so that they can remove a tree, once that building permit's expired and there's been no subsequent construction, then we would follow up with that. And I think that's something we can add to the ordinance.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So what happens with someone like, and I'm in an HOA where they, they do not allow you to just put trees? You, you, you can't just put in trees, okay? They have, they have architectural people that tell you where and what. So like I have a tree between myself and the neighbor, neighbor's trying to sell their house. They want me to cut it down. I'm not cutting it down, right? But if, if I were to have to and my HOA won't let me put another one in, then what happens to me?
Well, in, in this instance, it'd be if it was a required removal, then you wouldn't pay anything. Um, and with the HOA, obviously the, their replacement on trees, how they would govern that locally, but in the, in that instance, then instead of using the replacement ratio, you would have the fee. But if it was one of the permitted reasons for a residential removal, there wouldn't be any fee associated. It would just be the certified arborist statement.
Any more questions?
Just one final comment, you know, whatever ordinance goes through, um, what the next steps would be is we'd plan to work with our PIO, get the information out to the property owners, try to be proactive with that and get with all the registered tree removal companies to, uh, you know, get the information out there so they, they know all about it and, uh, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's announcements.
I'm going to bring a mufflers and nose protection to the next meeting. Um, wow. So it's freezing everywhere in the room. So, um.
Maybe it's over our head.
So I wanted to echo the Veterans Day Parade. I've, I've heard so many great things that there were many more people out there and the, the citizens were happy that we had that. Tomorrow, there is the Veterans Day, uh, remembrance, I don't know, ceremony, we're going to call it. Senator Burgess and I will both be speaking tomorrow, 11:00 AM. It's going to be chilly out at Zephyr Park at the Veterans Walkway. So you'll know that. We recently, Todd and some of the staff, we went to walk Baduco and it was fascinating to see it before anything goes inside. So you can see the mass of this. But during our tour, we, we found out that due to the tariffs and all the things that are going on, they're not going to be able to be building the storefront at this moment because they had talked about what used to cost them $790 is now costing $25,000. What used to cost, isn't that the number, he gave us that number, $790 is now costing them $25,000. So they just had to write a check to the, to the government for $3 million. So that is going to be paused. So they're looking at a storefront. So I was going to tell you, we told them about Wendy's, but I did notice, Todd, if you want to let them know that the barbecue place on 7th has shut down just recently and it's on the market. So if, if, you know, that might be another, another avenue for them. They're looking at a place that might be more of a drive-through, that could be retrofitted and it has a kitchen. That was the main thing, they needed a kitchen. And then, uh, as you know, my youth council and, um, Bars Propane Gas and AC are working on the, the Chips fundraiser and we're excited with the progress, but we'd love to have any of you guys come buy tickets to go. And it's November 20th. Let your family have a night off of cooking and come get barbecue chicken dinners on the 20th at Meals at Wells. I'll be putting that out. Kevin's going to help me social media to be putting things out too. Uh, so that's, that's from 5:00 until 7:30 on the 20th, that you can just drive through and pick it up. Okay? So that's, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, city manager's announcement.
All right. I just have a couple of things. Um, in front of each of you, you have the, um, the Zephyr Hills, the challenge coins uh, that are there. Uh, we, we ordered a few. Um, we're going to use those, uh, to give to employees that have done special things. Um, we have the Z-Star program, so anytime an employee's recognized, um, by the public or fellow employees, um, they're nominated and their name goes into the, I guess, the list for employee of the year. And so there were seven employees that today received these coins. Um, and seven, right?
Pretty cool.
Seven. Um, so we're going to use those this way. I know a lot of times they're passed out to kind of everybody, but we're going to try to make them a little special. Um, the HPB, the Historic Preservation Board, uh, we have some openings. Uh, so if there's anybody that you know that you would like to nominate or they're interested in, there is an application process, they need to come in or go online, fill that out, um, and submit that, and then they'll go through that process. A reminder, November 12th, which is Wednesday, we have the one-on-one meetings with Jones Edmonds regarding, um, the water and, um, visioning for the 17th meeting, which leads me to remember, reminder that next Monday, we have the November 17th workshop for visioning and, uh, to discuss water. There's November 14th, which is Friday, we have the Regional MPO workshop in Clearwater, uh, that we'll be attending. There's two state appropriations that we submitted, one for the airport, one for Meadowwood Loop, um, the equalization piping and generator, um, for that location. We also have the opportunity to purchase 7251 16th Street, which is Dave Armstrong's house. Um, I will reach out to each of you and have a conversation about what the appraisals say, um, which while the appraisals are, I think are at 150 and 166. So that gives you an idea of where we are. Um, I've had a conversation with him, he's open to something in that area. Um, so that's something that will come before council soon. We're also working with the FDM, Florida Department of Emergency Management on two different projects, uh, to receive funding, it's actually from Helene, not Milton, which I thought it was, but it's for Meadowwood and for, um, the reverse pumping, um, through the reclaim reuse line out of Silver Oaks. So we're working on that and just reminder that, uh, city hall will be closed tomorrow. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. City attorney.
Nothing from me, thank you.
City council comments. I'll start with Councilman Burgess.
Well, first of all, I wish that tree guy hadn't left so early because he might've had some good insight in some of that stuff. Okay. Um, I just wanted to remind everybody, uh, we have a playoff game, home playoff game Friday night, uh, starting the state playoffs for our football team. And I think Gail said she was going to provide hot chocolate for that thing while.
No, that's all I have.
I have a couple of things tonight. One, isn't the employee Thanksgiving Friday also the same day as the MPO thing?
Same days.
Same at Alice Hall Community Center, 11:30 to, for what, you know? Um, uh, the other thing is I, I would just like to tell it, let everybody know that Mike Perleman passed away Thursday night. He was a local realtor, uh, act, very active in Kiwanis and the Chamber and, and a, a good friend, I think, to, uh, Zephyr Hills, to just keep his family. In your thoughts? And then I, I just have a question for the city manager. Um, we hired that company to do FEMA reimbursement. Do we have an update on that, on how we're doing with that? Or can we get an update on it? I don't need it tonight, but I mean, I wouldn't imagine it'd be on the top of your head, but could we get an update on how that FEMA reimbursement thing's going with that company? Okay, thank you. That's it. Thanks. Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes, um, well, first of all, I just, sorry. First of all, I would like to, um, thank the, um, volunteers and staff and board members of Main Street Zephyr Hills for another successful event. Thank you. Ms. Hamilton, I saw you out there sweating to death. It was actually quite lovely day for a parade. Um, also, I would like to thank the committee that did the work on the selection of the C Mar. It's never an easy process, that's for sure. Um, I, I hope we've made the right decision. It's a very important one and it's a very exciting time for us. I'm a little nervous about committing our city to, uh, you know, $30 million bond, but the reality is that we've always been very good stewards of our taxpayers' money, I believe, and that, um, and these, these are not something we can skimp on. These are really truly for the benefit of our residents to be able to provide the excellent customer service that our public works and our, and our utilities department provides to our residents and the recreation that, and memories that people will make in Zephyr Park. So thanks for all of your work on that.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Thank you. Um, it is kind of scary, you're right. $30 million bond issue, $31 million bond issue. Kind of scary. It's like, uh, and I, I think the good news is kind of when you go in for a home loan, the first time my wife and I went in for a home loan, they told us you're qualified for X and we just laughed because we're like, there's no way we're going to spend that much on our house. Well, now people are having to do it. Now everything we get into is, you know, twice as much as you think it's supposed to be. You know, you, you think something that's going to be, an intersection's going to be a million dollars and it's two and a half million or three million. So it's, it's smart to do it now. Get the thing done, get it all at once. So we just need to be able, be ready, and I think we are, to use that money as quick as we can get it. Because the interest clock starts whenever you pull it, so we've got to be ready to use it. I know we put it in a fund and it gains a little bit of interest, but nobody can push their kids on the, that fund that's sitting there or enjoy it, you know? So, so we need to be ready to, to use it and I, and I think we are, I think we will be. Um, the young man that got up and spoke about the, the chickens tonight, I, I, I thought it was funny because he said, there's like 38 roosters. He was very specific on the number of roosters, which I, 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 I thought it was good. I loved it. I loved that he came up and said that. I don't think there's anything we can do about it because it's very, people love those chickens. Your neighbor would shoot us if we did anything for those chickens, so. Um, but anyway, I was glad to see that young man come up and, you know, we'll see him again, I'm sure. So.
Thank you. I was going to bring up that young man.